Okay, and do we have to roll call again? We just had a special meeting where we did.
No, the record will reflect that all town council are present. Thank you.
Great. And we have next, I'd love to hear an approval of the agenda.
Sam Moe?
Second.
Okay, Wainsoff, Kohler, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And announcement of closed session action. We gave instruction to staff and there's nothing further to report out of closed session. And the meeting protocol is something you hear every week. The mayor will maintain order at the meetings. The council and the audience are expected to refrain from using profane language and/or ridiculing the character or motives of council members, staff, members of the public, and to maintain the standards of tolerance and civility. Please turn off your cell phones or put them on silent mode. We will review the agenda at 10:00 PM to ascertain which items, if any, will be continued to another meeting. And any matter not started by 11:30 will be continued to an adjourned or regular council meeting unless at that time we vote to suspend that rule. That's usually, you know, there's some pressing emergency or something like that. Let me see, there's vacancies on boards and commissions. One on parks and rec. Well, it says one on open space committee, but we just appointed somebody to open space committee, so there is no longer one. The general plan implementation committee, which is a little bit moot, and one on the volunteer board. Applications are available for these at town hall and on the town website. Please contact the town clerk for more information. There's also going to be an Allison Wonderland tea party, February 12th, in this room from 2:00 to 4:00 PM. For tickets, you can contact Recreation Community Services Manager Maria Baird, or on the website, there's more info there. The food pantry is always from 9:00 to 11:00 on Saturday mornings at the Fairfax Community Church. No questions asked. If you need food, it's a good place to go and get a bag of food. So, you know, there's always volunteers needed. It's a, you know, it's a good thing to do on a Saturday morning, and it helps people, and it's quite rewarding. And if you need food, that's the place to get it. Are there any other announcements from any other members on the council or staff? Okay. So now we have open time for public expression, and if you wish to address the council on any matter that's not listed on the agenda, now's the time to speak. Individuals can have three minutes. One time coming up, you don't get to bank a minute or give it to somebody else. So decide what you want to say and say it all in the three minutes. If you're representing a group, it's five minutes. And we're not permitted to take any action because it's not agendized on anything that brings up. And it strictly limits our ability to discuss it, too, because it's unagendized, unless it can be demonstrated to be of emergency or we need to take immediate action because, you know, it arose after the agenda was printed up. So that's what that's all about, and it's open time. Yes, Mallory?
Hi, Mallory Guiden, Fairfax, Willow Avenue. I would like the town to consider a dog park. Pretty much every other town in Marin has one. And I don't know how to go back making that happen, but I'm willing to do whatever it takes if there is a committee. But I would like that to be considered. Thank you.
Are there others that have something to talk about this not on the agenda? Yes, I can see somebody. Press the button on the bottom and it'll, yeah, now it's on.
Okay. Abby Lauder, Deer Park neighborhood. Compost by dictionary definition, a mixture of various decaying organic substances as dead leaves or manure used for fertilizing soil. And did you know that according to the Environmental Protection Agency, over 95% of food waste ends up in the landfill? This is outrageous, but its solution is not impossible. Compost receptacles in downtown areas of Fairfax and its parks. Many of us have compost bins at our homes, but the town, nor its parks, have public compost bins. For example, if I'm walking downtown and I'm enjoying an apple or a burrito, I can't throw the remnants into a compost bin. Instead, I'm forced to throw them into the landfill. We could be turning this food waste into nice, fresh soil for our town and its citizens, but instead, we have to throw it into the landfill. I'm sure I'm not the only one who has thought of this, and I believe that having compost bins in downtown public areas and our parks would be very successful and beneficial to the town. I'm wondering if the town has looked into this, and if not, I'm curious if there's any recommendations on how I can move forward with this. Thank you.
Renee, would you like to comment?
Abby, thank you so much for bringing that to our attention. There is a lot of looking into this going on. I have a lot I can share with you. I'm not going to do it right now, but I could really use your help in working toward making this happen. There's reasons about not having compost in the downtown because of contamination. We can't even keep our recycling straight, I'll be completely honest, but we are working on some things even from the legal level in legislation about making sure that people stop throwing their organic waste or green waste in the landfill can. So we'll talk, and I have partnered with your sister before, so I really look forward to working with you.
Yes, Peter.
Thank you, Abby. And that reminds me, a very important thing. We do have green can recycling, the green cans at our curb, and you can compost kitchen scraps, food waste, pizza boxes. Those can all go in that green can, and that's one of the most important things that we as a town can do to make a contribution to reduce greenhouse gases, because all those food scraps, when they go into the landfill, create a lot of methane, which is a very bad greenhouse gas. And so, just a reminder, everyone, please try to take your kitchen scraps, put them, food scraps of all kinds can all go in the green can, and that's something that everyone can do at home and make a big contribution towards eliminating greenhouse gases. And twice a year, we get free compost delivered back to us for free for Fairfax residents.
I would be remiss not to tell everyone that even with those green cans, and we're on the third, fourth year of that program, there's only about 17% participation in using those green cans for food waste. People have caught on about yard waste, but only 17% of our very, very informed community is using it for food scraps.
All right. Any other comments from the public? Seeing none, we can say thank you very much, and I guess we're not taking action on anything that's emergency. So the next on the agenda is the consent calendar. Does anybody in the council have anything, questions about consent?
I want to say that I had some questions about item three, and I want to thank our town staff and her partner who responded to the questions I had. That was very helpful, so I don't have anything to raise here.
Okay, are there any comments or questions from the public on anything on the consent calendar? Seeing none? Yes, Renee?
The minutes from Wednesday, December 12th.
Yes.
Page one. I just need clarification, number three under consent, which says, "Report on amendments to Town Code Chapter 8.44, the clean indoor and outdoor air and health protection." Did we actually complete the amendment? To, it was on consent, but I don't believe, do you guys remember? If we went through, there was a report on amendments?
I can answer that, I think. I think we made a report on it and brought the ordinance to January for, it had been continued a number of times in the fall, and finally, we decided just to explain what we would like to do and what we would incorporate.
But the amendments have not taken place.
So in January, two weeks ago, you, yeah.
Continued it.
It's on the agenda later tonight, too.
Continued. Yeah, okay, thanks.
All right. Well, is that it from the council? Then, and nothing from the public on anything in consent? So then I'll close public comment on consent, and do I hear a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
Okay, it's Kohler, Wainsoff. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous. And now we're up for council reports and comments. These are brief announcements of meetings that people went to.
Well, very briefly, because we want to move on to number four. Two MCCMC things, the legislation committee. This was a very brief week since our last meeting. And then, of course, the dinner that you hosted, John, here in this very room, where we all got to have the opportunity to attend. So those were the two. Hopefully, everybody else's is nice and short.
Barbara?
Okay.
Take your time.
I attended a couple of Community Media Center of Marin board meetings, and these are the folks who film our meetings and also do the public access and education. And one of the things we're working on is changing our bylaws, and I'm working on a subcommittee to make sure that we can have more diversity on the board. I also attended the Upper Ross Valley Community Development Block Grant Planning Area Board Meeting. And what that is, is where monies from HUD are given out for low-income project or disabled people project, those kinds of things. And so that was the Upper Ross Valley, and tomorrow night is the countywide committee. I attended a couple of special town council meetings, which we all did, and also attended the Marin County Council of Mayors and Councilmembers meeting, where our speaker was Dr. Grant Colfax, who's the chief of Marin County Health and Human Services Agency. And he gave us kind of a state of the state of health in Marin County and where we can do better. So it was, he's a great speaker. Thank you.
Peter?
Yes, I also attended the MCCM meeting here, and the joint session on commercial central zoning and density bonuses. That was a joint meeting of the planning commission and town council. I also attended a Marin Clean Energy Board Meeting on behalf of the town, and also attended a meeting of the Zero Waste Subcommittee where we're reviewing the garbage rates for next year.
Thank you. Renee?
Yeah, so I attended the RX Safe Marin Annual Meeting. This is a group comprised partly of the Marin Prevention Network, and it's dealing with our very high numbers, our critical numbers of drug and opioid abuse in our county, as the number is climbing nationally and here as well. We had several special council meetings. I've attended two Chamber of Commerce meetings as town liaison to the chamber. I attended Jared Huffman's Town Hall and State of the Climate. This was immediately following some of the mess that we're having with the appointments to our national cabinet, and so Jared Huffman came and spoke, and that's where he announced that he would not be attending the inauguration. I've been attending the school board meetings and following the Ross Valley School Board's progress. As folks know, the Ross Valley Charter submitted a Proposition 39 request, which meant, and means that the school district, Ross Valley School District, needs to provide one of their facilities, a facility that's equal and of the same quality as their regular facilities. They have now offered to the Ross Valley Charter a space at White Hill Middle School. It will not displace the sixth, seventh, or eighth grade at White Hill Middle School, but they will be adding the Ross Valley Charter to the White Hill Middle School campus. And the next couple of months, they can go back and forth, accepting or not the Proposition 39 offer. Attended the first, the Wellness Center kickoff for Drake High School, and that is going to be a fantastic center for all of our youth, as we share the high school. And the Town Union High School District has contributed to making something happen that is critical. It's open for two weeks, it's not even furnished, and it's being used constantly throughout the school day. Attended the Joint Planning Commission and Town Council Meeting. I spent the day at the ABAG General Assembly. Lots of details to report out at some future date, dealing with governance and the merger between MTC, which is the Metropolitan Transportation Commission and ABAG, the Association of Bay Area Governments. And the merger so far is looking very positive, according to leadership from both of the organizations, and they're working out the governing structure. Zero Waste Marin Meeting this morning, talking about how we're going to bump up funding for schools programs and for extended producer responsibility and for composting and looking at new state legislation around composting. Thank you for your indulgence.
All right. You're just jealous. Yeah. All right. Yeah, plenty of meetings, and this is where, I mean, you can approach us, any of us, about these for more detail if you want. I also, I attended a Transportation Authority of Marin meeting, and also Safe Roots to School Subcommittee of the Transportation Authority, Fire Board Meeting, MCCMC, which is the mayors and council members talking about different things. You heard about Grant Colfax speaking here, and that was very informative. Couple of Chamber of Commerce meetings and the, all the other town meetings that other town council members. I also attended something on Saturday, which was really informative, stream bank repair and how to basically weave, you know, start willows in your stream banks and people live on the creek. It's a good thing to know about. And it's, it's, depends on where you live, but in Fairfax, it's totally okay to do that. You know, there's a few municipalities that require you to get permits to do it, but it's okay here. And it's basically a very non-invasive and really, I learned a tremendous amount about the health of streams and different ways we can keep flooding down and keep our stream banks from caving in, which they tend to cave in a lot with, you know, the old approach of just lining it with rock or cement or something like that. Causes a lot of problems downstream and right across. Anyway, that was at Drake High School. That was very informative. And then, the other thing I'd like to make a note of was that yesterday, I attended a, I guess it was kind of a hike and talk session with a number of people that Lyndon Novy, one of our Fairfax residents, organized out in Elliott Nature Preserve. We were looking at the various different approaches that Marin County Open Space is doing that. Mexcorten, the Open Space Director, was there. And John somebody, and I can't remember his last name, unfortunately, but he's, yeah, his name is not on the website yet, otherwise I'd give it to you. He's the new planner in Marin County Open Space. And I've got to say that what a very different weather change it has been. The previous director of that was kind of confrontational, I guess you might say, and people had a lot of contentious meetings in terms of restrictions around, you know, walking off trails and open space, and, you know, there's a lot of things. There's different erosion that's happening in different places, and they're trying to address that. But I can, there's a sea change of difference, and I think that's because of public participation, among other things. It's a breath of fresh air. So I am hopeful, looking forward. I had a number of good conversations during that. There was a number, there was about 10 people also there, just looking at erosion and different things around the trails and open space. So that's what I've got to report. And probably Garrett's next, right?
The only report I have is just to put some koodles out to our police, fire, and public works employees for all the hard work they've done during the storm, working 12-hour shifts or even more, just to address the different issues that arise during the storm.
Yeah, and thank you very much, Garrett, for saying that. I mean, a couple of nice days, and all of a sudden, we don't think it floods here anymore. But, I don't know, it's been significant weather, and thank you very much to all our public service, public works especially. And that's about it. The next thing we have is a public hearing, number four, consideration of an ordinance revising the planned development district ordinance, Town Code Chapter 17 dot 112, to amend the process for three sites identified in the adopted housing element. And, yes?
Mayor, excuse me? I would like to recuse myself. Because this is a matter of general zoning, there is no bright line that says I need to, but because there's an application pending for one of the sites, in order to ensure there's no appearance of impropriety, I will recuse myself.
And we'll miss your cutting intellect. All right.
Okay, Bob.
So Garrett.
Before I turn it over to the town attorney, that's actually going to walk you through some of the key revisions and maybe touch on some different recommendations that we'll have for you this evening, I just thought I'd make some introductory comments. So the PDD ordinance has been in existence, I think, prior to 1973. Over that time period, it has been amended from time to time. What really before you tonight is proposed amendments to revise the process as it would apply to what we're referring as qualifying sites or the opportunity sites listed in the general plan and housing element. And as a little background there, the general plan was adopted by the town in 2012. You've actually approved two housing elements since that time, in which the opportunity sites are part of that and the different policies discussed. People may forget, I think in 2014, maybe even 13, I forget when, we did conduct a series of general plan forums and housing element forums, where we talked specifically about opportunity sites and some of the different programs. The planning commission, the town council at various meetings have all discussed the concepts behind these opportunity sites. So it's something that's been out there and talked about quite a bit. And so that's just a little background there. But more importantly, I think to make clear to the community is that there's no action being taken tonight to rezone any properties. To rezone for specific properties, that has its own process that'll be taken separately to the planning commission and council. That's not what the action is tonight. Tonight is the consideration of an ordinance that does some tax amendments to what we refer to as the planned development district or PDD ordinance that modifies maybe the process that projects going through a PDD would have to apply to the process and how that works regarding the, what we refer to as the qualifying project. So I just wanted to point that out, to make that clarification of that's what's before you tonight. And at their January 19th meeting, the planning commission discussed this, heard public comment, and determined that the ordinance that was being recommended by staff, that they decided that it'd be better to modify it and change the PDD as it addressed the different qualifying sites in the specific sections. And those are things that we'll be going through with you, and I'll turn that over to the town attorney. And then lastly, I think it's important that we don't forget what the whole objective is here, the bigger picture. And the bigger picture for the town is creating a mechanism by which we can encourage and facilitate the creation of affordable housing. In this case, it's 100% one project, one opportunity project is an affordable 100% senior project. The others are affordable by design, and those projects are all once mentioned in the housing element and general plan. And so it's important to keep that in mind, what the overall goal is. And then lastly, to be clear, the housing element opportunity sites, while there are six, only three contemplate it ultimately being rezoned PDD. The others are regarding the conversion of CH to CC. So that's why it was the three PDD opportunity sites. So I just wanted to make those introductory comments, let people remember that, what is the whole purpose? Why are we doing this in the first place? And really, it's doing what I think it's the right thing, which is ultimately the creation of affordable housing, whether it's restricted or by design. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Janet Coulson, our town attorney, and then she has Katie Wazinski, our assistant town attorney, to go through the item before you tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Just briefly, before Katie starts in on the presenting the item, I'd like to mention that we received some comments from some members of the public, and I'd like to address some of those concerns very briefly. I think you heard Councilmember Kohler say that she was recusing herself, and she exited the room. That was one of the concerns that we heard. We also heard concerns about a potential conflict of interest for Mayor Reed and Councilmember Goddard. And we've reviewed that and find that there is no conflict of interest there. As well, we've heard concerns that the planning commission didn't review this item, and that would be in conformance with Government Code Section 65, 853. And I would like to note that this particular type of amendment is one that doesn't even have to go to planning commission. We took it there so that we could increase public participation, we could have more open forums about it, we could have more discussion about it, but technically, under the law, it doesn't even have to go to planning commission. And finally, we believe that the agenda description provided tonight is adequate and is in full compliance with the law. So now I'll turn it over to Katie Wazinski, and she'll go through the particular provisions that the planning commission reviewed, as well some other additional items that we'd like to talk to you about tonight.
Thank you. Okay. Katie?
Good evening. Can you hear me okay? So it's a pleasure to be with you this evening. On January 19th, I attended the planning commission meeting, where the commission considered revisions to our existing planned development district ordinance that would seek to streamline the review process for particular sites. Now, I know zoning districts and zoning language sort of read like VCR manuals, and it can be kind of jargon-filled, so we'll break it down a little bit. Basically, the town has a number of existing zoning districts, such as the CC or the RS6, but then we have a special type of zoning district, which is the planned development district. And that talks about both a district in and of itself, but also a process by which an existing zoning district can be rezoned to something unique and all its own. What we're talking about tonight is changes to the planned development district ordinance that would deal with the process, not any particular project being rezoned as a result of this, of tonight's discussion. So what the planning commission reviewed, and what's before you this evening, is a list of revisions to the existing planned development district ordinance that would streamline the approval process for Development District ordinance that would streamline the approval process for sites that are identified in our housing element as opportunity sites, that sites that are identified in the housing element as needing to be rezoned to Plan Development District. That comprises three sites out of the hundreds of parcels here in town. So this would have very limited application. And the general idea behind the ordinance amendments is that whereas we now have a three-step process, where an applicant would bring in a preliminary development plan to get a blessing for the general concept of what they want to do, and then they would bring in a master development plan to flesh out that general concept, and then they would bring in a precise development plan to really narrow down the details on how each phase would be implemented, we collapse those steps for these qualifying sites, these three sites, in such a fashion so that they still receive public hearings, the Planning Commission still reviews them, and the Town Council still reviews them, and they're still subject to all the same substantive submission requirements as any other parcel that wants to be rezoned to PDD. But it's done in such a way that the producers of housing at these sites would have the opportunity to make one trip through the Planning Commission, and two trips through the Town Council, rather than multiple trips through each body. We feel that this really does carry out the intent of the general plan direction that has been on the books for many years now, which direction tells us that we should revise the PDD ordinance to make it available to sites that are smaller than five acres, specifically these three sites. We should revise the PDD ordinance in its purpose and scope to identify the fact that some of the elements of these projects have already been dictated by the general plan, so they don't essentially have to be relitigated and redecided by the Planning Commission and the Town Council. For example, the first step in the existing process requires an applicant to come in and get the town's blessing as to the proposed uses and density or intensity. For the three sites that we're talking about, the town has already made policy decisions about some of the permitted and prohibited uses for each of those sites. So that homework has already been done. And since it has been done in the general plan, neither the Planning Commission nor the Town Council has the ability to change that as part of a zoning decision. If a, if a general plan amendment came in, we would have the ability, but not as part of a zoning decision. So it takes the homework that's already been done, and acknowledges that, and just moves the applicant to the next step in the process, still putting them through all of the same rigorous substantive requirements that are currently envisioned, with a few modifications, as we'll get to. So that's the 30,000-foot view. How do we actually do that? If you look at the final attachment in your packet, which is Attachment C, you'll see that we have a revised PDD ordinance for your review, and if you desire your action. And if you look at Attachment B, which is the red line, it shows each and every revision that the Planning Commission dictated or requested. We can walk through various parts of it if you want, and I'm happy to answer questions as to any change that the Planning Commission has recommended for your approval. But what I particularly want to bring your attention to is the very first change, which is in Section 17 point 112 point 010, the purpose section. And the planning? Of course. So it's the first page of Attachment B. And there, the Planning Commission has recommended that you approve a line that identifies that one of the purposes of this ordinance is to streamline the review and processing of applications for opportunity sites within the general plan that are directed to be rezoned to PDD by the general plan. And we call, call these qualifying sites, just for shorthand. That is the entire scope as proposed. So it's not allowing any person who walks in off the street to request rezoning to PDD under this revised process. You have to have very narrow parameters around you at this point to make use of the revised process. So that's the general overview. Yes, please.
We're hearing massive static.
So we're going to change mics, see if that helps.
I'm just going to change your mic out.
Is that any better?
Yeah, that's, that's better.
Okay.
Static's fine.
Okay. So
Difference for the people?
Is that okay?
Is, does that change things for the better, hopefully?
Okay. So at the Planning Commission's meeting on January 19, staff had brought a proposed PDD ordinance amendment that would have been the insertion of a single new section into the ordinance. And after reviewing the proposed revision, and hearing from the public, and discussing the matter more thoroughly, the Planning Commission decided that really what they would like to do is insert a new section, which is new section 165, which is in the ordinance, but also examine the entirety of the ordinance and make improvements to each section that they thought would better carry out the spirit of what we were trying to do here. So you have an annotated red line that explains most of these changes. And like I said, I'm happy to answer questions as to any particular changes that you'd like to discuss.
I have, I have one, just to start off, which is, we're talking about qualifying sites. And the issue is, we only have an application on one qualifying site. Why don't we just drill down on that particular site? Because it's not just the ordinance that we're reviewing. There's a resolution, of course, that attaches to it, and the resolution itself addresses the other two opportunity sites. So why, because I, obviously, we all know that there's a bit of disquiet in the neighborhood. Perhaps it would be best just to focus our attention on the Victory Village site itself, and discuss our zoning appropriately.
So when we began this effort, one of our guiding lights here, the brightest guiding light here, as it must be, is the general plan. And the general plan directs us to make PDD revisions that affect a number of sites. And in so much as we are changing a process or recommending a revised process, we're not necessarily looking to do that for a single parcel. We're looking to do that as a policy that carries forward our ability to review and approve projects that bring real benefit to the town. Not a single project, but for projects that have these benefits that the town desires and looks to. So that included the three opportunity sites that the housing element looks to that may support affordable or senior housing.
I take the measure of your comment. However, again, we don't sort of live in a little, in, in, in the vacuum, even here, in the little vacuum of our town. And we don't have applications on those other sites. So I see that, you know, we want to have a macro attempt. But I'm wondering your thoughts about, again, just drilling into, and the concept of the qualifying site being the Victory Village site.
So as a matter of course, we would not recommend, just as good zoning practice, that you revised your zoning ordinance in terms of process to only apply to a single site. We just wouldn't do that. We are happy to talk about the value of revising the zoning ordinance process so that it applies to a variety of projects or, you know, housing types that embody our goals and our visions, like affordable housing and senior housing, but not just choosing a single site. We don't want to, to narrowly apply it to one particular location.
And the reason for that is a legal reason?
So the concept of spot zoning is an older concept that says that if you treat a particular parcel differently than its neighbors, you may find yourself wandering into spot zoning territory, which courts have traditionally frowned on. You're supposed to treat equally situated parcels equally. To avoid spot zoning, and just to keep up with general good zoning practices, we look to adopt and embrace processes and policies that apply to a wide variety of desired outcomes, not a single location or a single project. When a, when a project comes in to be evaluated on its own merits, we'll evaluate that project. When a process comes in for us to evaluate, we want to think about how that process affects other locations in town as well, and how we can narrowly prescribe that process to facilitate or incentivize the types of projects that we want here in So the, right now, the qualifying sites, the sites that could make use of this process, this revised streamlined process, are those that are identified as the opportunity sites in the housing element that are also slated to be rezoned to PDD. That's three sites. However, it has been pointed out that an applicant could bring in a development application for one of those sites that wasn't necessarily 100% affordable, or wasn't necessarily a senior housing project. And so could we further refine the scope of these changes to really just incentivize the projects that we're looking to encourage in town? And we do think that we could revise it such that in order to qualify for this revised process, you would have to be an opportunity site slated to be rezoned PDD. But in addition, offer the town some concrete markers toward achieving our affordable housing goals, or our senior housing goals, or other such public policy goals that we've already identified as so important in our housing element or general plan. So we are open to, and think that it would be permissible, to further narrow the scope of the proposed amendment tonight, and we're happy to discuss that.
Okay, let me
So, getting back to that Section 7, which is where we identify what the qualifying sites are, we believe that under current case law, it would be, I'm sorry, I'm looking at Section 17 point 112 point 010 on Attachment B, which is the red line. And under Section 7, which is the new language the Planning Commission has recommended for your approval, we could further limit that by saying to streamline the review and processing of applications for opportunity sites within the general plan that are directed to be rezoned to PDD by the general plan, and which provide senior housing or affordable housing. And we can talk about in what levels. The town would be happy to review those projects at. So it really further narrows the scope, so this wouldn't be a streamlined process that a market rate developer could come in and avail themselves of, but rather would be one that would be limited to those projects that help our affordable housing production, help our senior housing production, those types of projects.
And I think, Katie, you've actually drilled down on the most important thing. I, I would ask my colleagues to note that I read through this, and I made Scrivener's corrections to this. I don't know if you all got that draft, or if you did. They didn't change substance. They were just what we call Scrivener's corrections. I think, Katie, that you've actually just touched on something critical that bears repeating. The whole reason we're doing this is because every single council member who has ever served up here, when, when the vote came up, supported the very language of affordable housing, senior housing, in the general plan. And that when we brought the housing element back for a second look, further council members had the opportunity to review, the community had the opportunity to review. And we've all supported unanimously this overarching goal, which I think the Planning Commission is identifying here in its, in its, in its new text. But beyond the community's need and values, is the question of the fact that our housing element, we, we don't live in a bubble. And that housing element doesn't really have life until it's supported and approved by the state of California. And it did so, only because we identified these certain particular opportunity sites for that specialized need that you have just identified, whether it's senior housing, affordable housing. And so we didn't pick these randomly. They were selected for the benefit that they would provide the community, consistent with the very values that the community discussed over a 10-year period, resulting in our extraordinary general plan. So I think you touched upon those, but I, I want to make sure the community understands, how did we get here in the first place?
Thank you. That's very helpful.
Yeah. There were comments or questions? Peter?
Thank you, Mayor. So as I understand it, the, the purpose of this ordinance is to create a more streamlined process for what, the way the ordinance has it set up for what are called qualifying sites, that would remove some of the PDD, or lessen some of the PDD steps to allow projects that meet criteria that we think are worthwhile, to sort of give them a leg up on the approval process. Is that a fair way of characterizing this?
So I would say that we're not exactly lessening them, to the extent, they still have to do all of these things. We are consolidating them, so it's no longer as time-consuming a process to travel through this approval process. Still, you have to provide the information that would be sought in a preliminary development plan. You have to provide all the information that we want from a master development plan, and you have to provide all the information for the precise development plan. But yes, it is to incentivize those types of projects that we're looking for.
And so one of the ways we can narrow, in, in, I mean, in a way, it is, I think, giving projects that we would determine based on their characteristics are worth developing for whatever reasons, for affordable housing or creating senior housing. It is giving them a little better, or a little more advantageous process. And if I understand your comments that we can't particularly focus on a particular physical location, but we can raise the bar, so to speak, and narrow the criteria of the project being applied for in terms of its percentage of affordability and so forth. Is that, is that a fair summation of what?
I think that's it exactly. We're not here to discuss one particular site. We're here to discuss a process, and how we can revise our existing process without throwing it out entirely, revise it in such a way as to incentivize the types of projects that we've been looking for, for all the years since we adopted the general plan. And now we're trying to implement that direction. And doing that could be done through narrowing the scope of this ordinance amendment, so that it only applies to those sites that are opportunity sites, that are going to be rezoned to PDD, that would, for example, give us affordable housing or senior housing for a minimum duration of time. We could certainly do that.
And, and also that would have a minimum, we could do that for, say, 100% afford, we could reserve this process for, by defining a qualifying site as one that produces, say, 100% affordable housing, or 100% senior housing.
We can narrow the scope of this. What we're looking to when we consider this, this process is how do we do it in such a way so as to still capture a, a range of projects and product types that advance our goals? How do we do it in such a way so that it can be useful to people who want to bring affordable housing projects and senior housing projects to us? The, the more narrowly we slice that, the, obviously, the more narrow is the chance for it to be used. So if we make it that narrow, I think we can. The issue becomes, how useful is it across the board?
Okay. And then I had a couple, just a quick question about the, there's also a change, a discussion in the ordinance about the fee structure. And I think that's on Section 1.120. And it, it's a last subsection. And it's a last subsection, and it says, "A qualifying sites that seek concurrent review of proposed master development plans and precise development plans shall pay a fee established by the town council." So, my question is, excuse me, how much is that, is the fee to apply for a PDD currently?
You know, that's a very good question. I'll have to ask for Garrett's input here. The question was, what is the current fee to apply for a PDD? But before he gets to that, can I just tell you that the Planning Commission recommended this sentence being added because, as things stand right now, you pay one fee when you apply for a master development plan, and then you pay a separate fee when you apply for a precise development plan. And the Planning Commission recognized that if you bring both of these things in at the same time, there may be certain economies that are realized, and so the town council may wish to adopt a different fee for this concurrent consideration of those items jointly. So, with that being said, I'll defer to Garrett on what the amounts are.
The fee is the same. Precise plans, $2,500. Master plans, $2,500. Precise plans, $2,500. If we were to combine it right now, then we would probably say $2,500, lacking some type of fee study when we do that to determine how many hours of staff time actually takes to process the application.
Otherwise, it's $7,500, that you'd be paying that...
If you went, yes, each individual pays.
And can we defer on setting that fee? Can we set that at another meeting?
Well, actually, what would happen with the fee is, yes, you would have to do it at another meeting via resolution, but typically fees require some type of analysis to determine, is that fee justified, given the number of staff hours required to process an application? And that's something we would need to look at if we thought that it warranted a different fee. But you would do it by resolution, and it would be a separate public hearing.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, Renee?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I want to go back, Katie. So, with the staff report, I'm a little confused here because I'm hearing you say that you're now thinking in light of what the comments we received were, that we might look at narrowing the scope as we're talking about these opportunity sites. This is not what came to us from the Planning Commission. If I'm correct, if I understand correctly, we're looking at something above and beyond what it is they did when they amended the entire PDD or made suggestions to amend the PDD ordinance. This is a new suggestion in this staff report, correct?
What I would say is that if you go back and watch the six and a half hour Planning Commission meeting, you'll see that the Commission throughout referred to the fact that they wanted the streamlining process to be useful in encouraging affordable projects and the senior projects and the types of projects that are identified in the housing element. So, I wouldn't say this is a departure from what they had proposed. I think this would be a further implementation of what their ultimate goals were. We just didn't drill down on it to this degree in that meeting.
Okay.
Okay. And did you have other questions? No?
I do. Go ahead.
Yeah, okay, well, yeah, I'm supposed to go last, so. Yeah, it's, this is, I mean, I can only imagine that this sounds kind of arcane from the audience perspective, but it's a legal matter, and I mean, I guess, it makes me, you know, very uncomfortable to think that we're gonna, you know, you hear streamlining, and you think, okay, you know, we're greasing the skids for something. And I, probably along with a lot of people in the community, are kind of worrying about what that is inviting in. And, you know, you don't want to be caught flat-footed or whatever with some unforeseen repercussion, you know, and basically trying to make, you know, design it to encourage affordable housing, for instance, and then end up with, you know, I mean, we see, you know, that the current project that's there is a lot bigger than, you know, people had imagined in density bonus things. We had a workshop here about density bonus, and there, you know, there's a big laundry list of, you know, different kinds of bonuses that you get for doing different things. And I think that what you've been talking about here, just for people in the room to understand, is narrowing the types of things that would allow that to happen to being just affordable and things like that.
I think that's exactly right. So, we have heard from the community at the hearing on the 19th and in correspondent sense that the community really does desire to make sure that this process would be limited in its scope to those types of projects that get us closer to realizing our affordable housing goals, our senior housing goals, those other public policy goals that are enshrined in the housing element that receive so much public participation. And so, as I said, we are comfortable with revising the qualifying sites to incorporate those concerns. But I also want to point out that we aren't losing substantive review of any of this in the streamlining. These projects that qualify for streamlining still have to submit all of the information that would be required, and they still have to be subject to all of the findings that are required. It's just an acknowledgement that for certain stages of these projects, that homework's already been done. So, for example, the preliminary development plan requirement, the streamlining would allow applicants to skip that step. And that step requires that the applicant seek approval of the general acceptability and intensity of land use and their interrelationship. So, if our general plan has already talked to those things, as indeed it has for some of these opportunity sites, then it just acknowledges, check, we've done that, the community has decided what we want here, and we'll move on to the next step. It's not a pass, it's a recognition that that information's already out there.
Yes, Renee?
So, could you review, please, for me and for the public, what, when you talk about public process and how often there is an opportunity for the public to comment and to weigh in and to bring their thoughts, their suggestions, their dismay? How does it change between the streamlined version and the version that's in the existing PDD ordinance? How many less opportunities are there for public comment and public expression?
Big concern of mine, too.
So, right now, we have a three-step process. An applicant would come in with a preliminary development plan that would give the town a general idea as to the proposed uses and the proposed density, which is number of housing units per acre, or intensity, which is the floor area coverage of the site if it's a commercial project. That's all you're really looking for in the preliminary development plan. So, that comes to Planning Commission for an initial blessing. Then, you go to the master development plan stage, and at that stage, which has to happen within one year of the preliminary development plan, the Planning Commission reviews an application that really flushes out the project and gives you a much better sense of site plan, grading, land uses, final density numbers, engineering, all of the usual information that we're looking for in a project. So, that comes back to the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission makes its recommendation based on a number of findings that are spelled out. The town council then holds its own public hearing and considers whether or not to accept the Planning Commission's recommendation. And we have all the grounds that the town council would review it under, and they make their final action. Then, there's a third step. So, within a year after getting your master development plan, the applicant comes back to the Planning Commission with a precise development plan that lays out exactly what your landscaping will look like and what the grading's going to be and the phasing of the project if it's multi-phase. And the Planning Commission holds a hearing on that, and it goes to the town council as well. What we are proposing for these qualifying sites is that the first step, the preliminary development plan, gets set aside because that information has largely been satisfied. The second step, the master development plan submission, remains the same. Applicant comes in with all the information that we're requiring of you, but at the same time, they can also bring in their precise development plan and show us exactly where they're going to put each tree and each parking space and all of the fine-grained details of the proposed project. The Planning Commission considers that at a public hearing. If it needs more than one public hearing, it can be continued, there could be a workshop. It doesn't mean one night only. It means they consider it at a public hearing. They make their recommendation to the town council, and the town council also holds its own public hearing. As part of this process, the town council ultimately adopts an individual zoning district for that project, a planned development district that lays out the development standards and uses for just that project. Any ordinance has to have two readings, so that's two times in front of the town council. So, still lots of opportunity for public participation.
But, I mean, I think that the PDD district, I mean, that these regulations were designed to have a lot of public input, and I think the project, you know, basically western, out by White Hill School, you know, the whole Glen Drive, and there's a number of little streets around there. I don't know how many units that is, 300 or something? It was a big project in the 60s, and that's kind of what this was built around, you know, getting a lot of input on. So, that totally makes sense to me because that's a lot of, that's a big project.
And I hear what you're saying. I think that I would distinguish the qualifying sites, the sites that we're talking about, I believe they're all two acres or less. We're not talking about something that's going to support 300 units, but two acres or less. And in fact, I think the smallest of these qualifying sites is 1.24 acres. So, these are small infill sites that are not going to be capable of being developed to the same extent that some of these older PDDs were.
If I may add, typically, the PDDs, excuse me, are applied to larger properties, which may be more susceptible or made more sense for phasing. Because I believe one of the projects, and I forget the name, we went back and looked at the file, it was a five-year process from preliminary plan to precise plan, and it was in phases and so on. I think what Katie refers to, and this is the cases, these are very small projects in which the developer, if you use an example of RCD for the senior housing project, knows exactly what is going to be there. They don't need to do a preliminary because they know exactly what they want to propose, and that's something that's going to need the Planning Commission, and they've been talking about it at many different type of meetings, the exact type of project. And so, what this does for the qualifying projects, because they're so small, they know what it's going to be, and so they're bringing all the details now so you can get it. Part of the PDD processes, they're not sure. Typically, in a larger project, you have an idea what you're thinking, you're thinking it'd be in phases, so here's what I'm thinking. And then, as you refine one phase, you come back and go, here's my master plan for these phases, precise plan, this is it for this one phase, and then they could come back and do some other things. So, I think that's a key distinction. These are small sites where they know exactly what they have in mind, and to be honest, we have many numerous hearings on these different projects because they're, it's just, in essence, I look at it, if it's a one acre, it could be someone proposing a house. They know exactly what they want. And so, they're coming in that one time, and then we're having the review process. So, it's important to think about this from, to apples to oranges, the size of the project. And really, what we're trying to achieve is, per our general plan in housing element, allowing, in this case, more affordable type housing if they wanted to, because they know what they want to do, to come in and just do one master plan and precise plan together for consideration. But that being said, and I'm not sure Katie even got through her whole presentation, and I do know it sounds like the council when it came to adding what I would refer to as additional requirements for qualifying sites, that's in essence what we're saying if you want to drill down. I think Katie talked about senior housing or affordable housing. I would go so far as to say you could say 50% restricted affordable housing or something along those lines, if that made the council more comfortable to address concerns about not being able to control or lack of control on other PDD sites. Again, it's really applying to two sites, because for School Street Plaza, we're actually talking about a different process for that, that it's PDD in the back half and maybe CC in the front. But that's a completely different process that's going to take a while to just discuss what we even want to envision. And more importantly, every project still needs to go through a rezone. Every project's going to need to come up with its own standards and project, and that has to get approved by an ordinance, which is significantly higher standard than you would if you just came in with a single-family house. That's not approved by an ordinance. So, it's important to note that there are lots of controls in what we're trying to achieve, and I guess I would advise the council is, let's focus on what those qualifiers are of what we're trying to achieve as your overall goal, which you stated was affordable housing for the community, so.
Yeah, I guess, just looking down the road, School Street Plaza is, you know, you bring up as an example, and when that first came up here, you know, the housing was just restricted basically along Broadway, you know, with, you know, the same kind of treatment as the rest of downtown, and that kind of made sense. I was kind of reluctant even there, but basically, it doesn't affect what's there now. School Street Plaza is a, it's a crucial part of what makes our community our community. It's got inexpensive, you know, they're kind of rundown spaces, but that's the nature of an inexpensive space, you know, that it's, you know, business incubator, you could call it that. There's a lot of things that happen there that are very, they're crucial to a lot of the, you know, things that happen in the streets around in Fairfax and the types of people that are here and the types of activities that happen. You know, you're not going to get that with, you know, what Mr. Azazi came in and, you know, rolled out as his preferred thing that he'd love to see, and it's basically looked like a bunch of condos for rich old people. You know, and this council appropriately kind of said, no way, and as did the audience, too. And I guess I'm worried about, I mean, I want to talk about that process a lot, and, you know, the School Street Plaza, you know, just switching it around, all of a sudden saying, oh, well, the back is all zoned like this, and we can put a bunch of housing in there, and then still have the other part that we already reluctantly approved because the state had this hammer hanging over our heads. And maybe that's, you know, now's a good time to mention that that's the arena numbers of, you know, these, okay, we have to demonstrate to the state that we are, you know, we have a plan to zone for, you know, a certain amount of housing, and that allows them to basically get off our backs and free up our tax money to come back. Well, I think we're going to meet those arena numbers pretty rapidly, you know, with the size of the project that's currently, you know, going out in West Fairfax. And, you know, I mean, I guess I'm getting off of the legal thing right here, but I think it's important to speak to the process and, you know, how we don't want the cart to run the horse, or whatever it is, bad saying, but...
I'm just curious, and I think we need to go out to the public, because people have a lot to share, or we're not done yet, but my question is, I want to know ultimately tonight, how far can we go? So, we've got HCD and an approved housing element based on what it is that we outlined in our plan, but I've always been concerned about the fact that we're going to have these three qualified sites, and we aren't really going to have a hold on the affordability. And that's the same I have about all the rezoning around town in terms of inclusionary zoning. If we're really here about affordable housing, I think we need to take it to the edge of what we can do with all of the restraints and the constraints that we have. So, I want to, I would like to know that. I mean, it would be easy to say that if we're going to streamline these opportunity sites, that they have to be 100% affordable. But I don't know if that's something that you can just come in and do because the likelihood of that, given how hard it is to move forward with an already 100% affordable project, is certainly daunting. certainly daunting.
So our obligation to the state is to rezone sufficient sites to meet our regional housing needs allocation. The way in which we're approaching that this evening is trying to find a way to facilitate that rezoning process for certain projects that meet the goals that are shared by the state, affordable housing projects, senior housing projects. So if we wanted to further revise or refine the definition of qualifying sites that you see in that subsection seven on the first page of your zoning ordinance, to limit it to applications proposing 100% affordable housing developments that are subject to recorded deed restrictions, ensuring continued affordability for not less than 55 years, we think that would be permissible under the law, and it would allow us to keep our arms around the availability of this streamlined process for just those projects that really met the goals that we hold near and dear to our hearts. We would just have to acknowledge that if any of those opportunity sites that didn't qualify under this revised process came in, we do still have language in the housing element talking about how we will treat them, right? We do still have, you know, language saying that the five-acre minimum for PDD rezoning notwithstanding, this 1.2-acre site can still come in and apply for PDD. So we would still have to honor that, right? That obligation doesn't change. But I think that for tonight's streamlining purposes, we are on okay footing refining this availability more narrowly.
Thank you, just echo on that. Thank you, Mayor. HCD does not require, didn't require us to, as part of, you know, getting our general plan approved with target numbers for housing, to streamline our PDD approval process. So I think we are, I agree with council that we do have within our power to set the bar really, really high, including it 100% affordable. And I think that that's consistent with our goal of encouraging affordable housing at these locations. We shouldn't be, as John said, sort of greasing the skids for projects that come in at low affordability, because that doesn't serve our purposes, our higher purposes of trying to enhance opportunities for affordable housing, and to make sure that these opportunity sites aren't sort of opened up for, for-profit development. And I also want to note that although the general plan talks about affordability goals for the Alima site and for the Lutheran Church site, it's silent as to any affordability goals for School Street. So I don't think we want to open up a expedited process for PDD approval for that location when it, there's not even a requirement in the general plan for it to have affordable housing. It just says housing. So those are, I feel comfortable then that we can set a really high bar for any application that wants to take advantage of this expedited process. It needs to be, you know, 100% affordable or 100% senior housing. And I think that will ensure affordable housing is given an advantage, which is good public policy, and will also prevent the concerns that's been expressed by the community that we're opening up this process, making it too easy to get PDDs approved for projects that may not be deserving of that, that sort of enhancement.
Okay, thanks, Peter. Any other comments from up here? Maybe I should go out to the public at this point. So, yeah, please, lots of people want to speak. Please keep it to three minutes each time, try to organize your thoughts, so it's right there. So, thank you.
Carl Deal, The Cascades in Fairfax. My understanding is that the Victory Village project has been under development in one form or another for about five years, almost exactly the same time as the general plan has been in effect, although the housing element, of course, was added later, or revised housing element. And my understanding is that the church and the nonprofit that has selected its developer has discussed with staff and has looked at the general plan and seen that the general plan clearly contemplates a streamlined process. And I under, from my understanding, the developer and the, and the church were willing to go through the current review process for PDD, but were told, and in reliance upon the language in the general plan, which is very specific and very directed to the, to the staff to, to prepare the rezoning for the town to adopt it, that in reliance upon that, the developer and the, and the church have now put together what is the equivalent of the, not, not just the preliminary, but the master plan and even some elements of a precise plan. And while they could have, five years ago, gone through the current process, they did not do so. And they did not do so in reliance upon what this council or its predecessor did five years ago, and then reaffirmed a year or two ago in the revised plan. So I would suggest to the council that it would be most unfair to a project that is 100% affordable to make them now go back and do that process, which in reliance upon the, the language of the general plan, they did not do. So I want you to consider the equities of the situation, the equities, as well as the necessity of meeting our goals of affordable housing when you consider this rezoning event. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi.
Jane Richardson Mack, 49 Madrone Road. This is such an enormous topic, and it's so fraught with, I don't, emotional, I feel like I'm going to go throw up. It's, it's just, it's a big deal, and it feels like you're, I don't, if anything, I think the process should be made more complicated, to take longer, so there's more public input. We had a lot of input, there were workshops. I don't see much of anything that came from the workshops reflected anywhere. I just sort of felt like I, it was, it was, nothing, it wasn't, nothing happened. I mean, I don't, I don't really see or feel much of the community's input being reflected back. If anything, it feels the other way around. I don't understand how the Victory Housing and all this talking about, our goals of affordable housing and senior housing, they're not our goals. Nobody from Fairfax is going to be able to live in the Victory place. It's all going to be people from other places. I understand there's a lot of need for affordable housing and senior housing everywhere, but Fairfax is a very small, unique, little piece of paradise. We can't afford to take the same size kind of places that, say, Santa Fe or Vallejo or even Navarro. We're, we're so unique and so special. This place, I mean, I understand and respect all the hard work and energy that's gone into it, but surely, when they first proposed it, they knew they weren't in compliance with our rules and regulations. And now we're being forced to, because this A-bag thing is hammering us, or whatever, I don't even know what we gain, but I sure know what we lose. We lose the character of our town. That building is too big. I'm on the tree committee, I'm not here as part of that, but I was the only one that said no to taking down all the trees. It's just, to me, it's the wrong place, the wrong thing. If it were like the Bennett House, where it was privately funded, smaller, where Fairfax residents could live, I mean, I don't say close the doors to anybody from anywhere else, but at least give our people a chance. And it makes more sense in terms of commuting. Our, our people who work in the stores, our teachers, our shop clerks, our people who live and work in Fairfax can't afford housing to live and work in Fairfax. And now they won't be able to have their parents or their old people or their kids have any hope of us being able to take advantage of the senior housing and the affordable housing. So I would say dial it back, take time, let there be even more public input, and if there are workshops, I mean, somehow, please, make it work. This, I, this will go down to me as a time of shame and infamy, that our, our town is going to change badly. It needs to grow organically and sensibly and preserve what's so special about it. There isn't another town like this probably anywhere, maybe in Europe. Sorry, thank you.
Wow. Wow. I liked what she had to say. Quite a few couple things. If you look around the room, especially on this side of it and most of that side of it, almost everybody here has a house. And almost everybody here knows all kinds of people that are no longer in town for various reasons. Creative people, people that haven't dedicated their life to making money and playing the money game. And where are all them? Anyway, there's perceptions, there's intentions, and there's actualities. I have a lot of concerns for unintended consequences and local control. Just what are we giving up and what are we gaining? What entitlements are being granted? Who benefits from the streamlining? Can we not streamline per project or per, I mean, I don't know quite how to do that, but anyhow, let's see. Senior and affordable housing, truly and really, I mean, what's affordable? As I said about everybody here having a house or a fairly stable place to live, what are our mortgages that have been here for a while? And what are the mortgages and the rents, and what's happened to the rents? What's actually affordable for our seniors and anybody on low income, whatever low income is? And what is actually being charged? What is considered low-income rent in Lutheran Church or anywhere? And as for Lutheran Church, that was a community of people. The Lutheran Church was a community of people. They were kind of dying out, old, they'd been here for a long time, and they wanted to see that land go to something good, good for the community. I support that. It's kind of big, maybe. So what are we doing to keep our seniors and our low-income folks here, as opposed to taking care of the low-income folks and seniors from all over California and all over the Bay Area? There's a lot of us, but I've got more of a spot for our seniors and our low-income people. It's just, they're already here, and why do they have to move to Sacramento or wherever it is? I listened to someone on the radio today who likened outside money and outside wealth as an invasive species. Think about that. What's an invasive species, and how does that work and operate? I like that analogy. And what, what does it do to, it wrecks havoc on a local ecosystem. So we need to be careful of that. School Street. School Street already serves our community as it is. How can you improve on that with increased rents? I can pretty much guarantee you, anything that changes that goes in there is going to double or triple the rents. Whoever's there now, which is kind of the heart of our community, is no longer going to be there. And back to something my wife said about the Lutheran Church community, do some good. How do we do some good in and for our community? I mean, yes, do some good for the whole world, but, you know, we got to start here.
Thank you.
Good evening. Diana Purdue, Scenic Road. I'm going to read what I wrote so I don't lose my place. "I think that Fairfax has a better future than this ordinance allows it. I do not favor the Planning Commission's idea to change the planned development districts known as PDDs by making updates and changes, such as reducing the minimum acre threshold to less than five acres where it now stands. To change this minimum for three sites, numbers one, two, and four, the Lutheran Church, 10 Al Lima Road, and School Street, just because they're in the general plan as opportunity sites or qualifying sites, they should not be streamlined either. I believe Fairfax was required to, or it was a trend, to identify opportunity sites for new housing. Many towns have these designations in their general plan, but there are no edicts to change a town zoning in any way, shape, or form for those with this designation. The general plan does not require a streamlining provision, and it should not have exceptions, and our regulations should not be swayed. There's a new bill in the Senate that tackles some of these issues before us. There are made clear in Senate Bill 35, the Housing Accountability and Affordability Act. The bill has a streamlining provision that states a city approval process will get streamlined if a proposed project that meets all zoning requirements, design review, and that pays workers a prevailing wage is not approved, then the steamrolling, the steamlining provision will automatically approve it. It does not say you change your zoning in the forefront. This is not a per-project tool. This is a per-project tool and is not written into the general plans. This is what Fairfax needs. This is all Fairfax needs. We do not need provisions in our general plan for select properties where it is unknown what will be proposed or actualized. And this brings me to the site of Victory Village. The numbers being bandied about are that the developers have waited four years for approval for their senior apartment projects, so they deserve rezoning and streamlining. And I think that's a wild overreach. No one ever stopped the developer from presenting the plan to the Planning Commission in the manner every other person would and has to. This developer should follow our regulations and policies. Their cries show very little respect for Fairfax. Then to see their prospectus link opportunity sites two and four to theirs, but not opportunity sites three, five, and six, is more than curious. What do any of these have to do with Victory Village? They need to be removed from this association and each site left to stand on their own merit." I'm not against Victory Village, per se, but, well, we'll talk about design review at another time. But today, my focus, I'm almost there. Today, my focus is on the PDD designation. The developer wants to buy a 20-acre parcel and cram Victory Village into two of those acres. It seems to me if the developer used five of his 20 acres, they would be in compliance with our town regulations of a minimum five acres for PDD. There would be no exceptions granted them. I believe this may be key to a PDD classification in their favor. If they have fewer acres, they do not qualify. So I'm asking you to consider this ordinance very carefully. The fabric of our community is at stake. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council members. Fairfax's regional housing needs allocation for the 2015-2022 cycle is only 61 units. It's impossible to try to respond to your 42-page staff report, legal opinion, and ordinance, you know, in three minutes. So I'm just going to touch on a couple of things. Nineteen residents submitted comments to you, and I just handed out your clerk with a hard copy in case you haven't seen it yet. We are challenging the right of three council members to vote on this project, on this ordinance this evening. Council member Kohler has, has properly recused herself, recused herself, but she won't be voting. We have, since you've taken the map down for, for, conflict of interest spheres, you know, the 500-foot mapping, we can't tell if Mayor Reed is within the 500 feet or not. He's probably pretty close. When I was an elected official, I could not vote on a project that was within 500 feet of my home, first of all. And number two, And number two, if it affected my business that I did, whenever an application came before me that included someone that I did business with, I recused myself. I did not vote. And so we have Councilmember Goddard, who some time back was working for a nonprofit in Fairfax that rents space in School Street Plaza. I believe Councilmember Goddard was employed by that nonprofit for a period of time. I don't know if she currently is or not. But if she is, she's going to have to recuse herself because her employer rents space in School Street Plaza. As one of the authors of Fairfax's PDD ordinance back in the 60s and 70s, I'm shocked at your attorney's gutting of the protections that we built in for our town, for the public process, and to be able to prevent overdevelopment and redevelopment that's inappropriate for our community. No noticing of the adjacent neighborhoods to School Street Plaza or Tenalima was ever made, or the 16 businesses at School Street Plaza, they were never given a notice either. You're faced with the age-old question. Does the end justify the means? So think about that a bit. The ordinance before you was not heard or approved by the planning commission. That ordinance needs to go back to the planning commission before you can act on it. Thank you very much.
Hi, everyone. Denise Larson, Manor Hill. Most of us strongly support affordable housing solutions and community-enhancing development that reflects our town's character. We feel that the proposal before you to prove a new streamlining quote-unquote process for reviewing development applications will encourage adversely impactful developments and severely limit public participation and community voices is therefore unacceptable. Even the fact that the attorney said, well, you can have a workshop or you can do something, that's different than a guarantee. In addition to such proposals, such a proposal is unnecessary. Fairfax has had a planned district development zoning process in place since the 1960s, which has served the public well in protecting our shared community values and preservation goals. For these and other reasons detailed herein, we respectfully ask that you reject the so-called streamlining proposal and retain and reinforce our town's commitment to the PDD process, government transparency, and public engagement in all the local planning decisions. Unfortunately, a great deal of institutional knowledge has been lost in recent years due to the turnover of planning and town staff and the seemingly endless series of third-party consultants and outside agencies, representatives that have influenced public policy and planning decisions. As a result, our town council has been basing its decisions-making on a great deal of misinformation, biased input, and incorrect legal advice, excuse me. For example, the consulting attorney who advised the public planning commission about the existing Fairfax PDD projects at their meeting on January 19th stated the Village West, Canyon Village, Meadowland, and Bennett House were not processed by Fairfax using its PDD zoning three-hearing process because it was basically too time-consuming and cumbersome. She said that the Fairfax PDD projects were processed by Marin County annexed to Fairfax. That is not true. A number of projects have been processed using this, our current zoning requirements, and they're all processed in a timely fashion. I also want to say that there are not any current proposals and may never be on the other two sites at this time, so it does not make sense to link them together. I thought also at the joint meeting that Mimi was very wise in suggesting that we change the redundancies in the current PDD and keep what we have rather than opening that door. Also, I spoke to Senator McGuire's office and Senator Weiner's offices about SB 35. Even in this process, if it's approved, we'll streamline only one site at a time if a proposal comes in if we aren't meeting arena numbers. And it has to be, and it's on vacant lots, either the building or the lot has been abandoned for at least 10 years, and it has to meet a town's current zoning. So opening the door and changing any of this, I think, does not give us the guarantees because I don't think there are any. And I just don't want to go on, well, maybe we can. And I think I resent, too, being a person living in this town for a few decades, that when someone makes comments like the town desires, or this is what we've been looking for, I don't know who they're referring to. I've only been involved in this process the last several months, but I think unless something's been put to a vote of the people to see what we really want, for people just to say this is what we want, I want to keep our town as great as it has been and take a slow process so we don't change what we have. Thank you.
Hi, Deborah Benson, Cascade Drive. None of Fairfax's four approved PPD zones and existing projects, including the Bennett House, have ever been considered spot zoning, according to Fairfax's previous town attorneys. Pardon? Oh, sure. Simply applying special zoning to a parcel is not spot zoning. The California Supreme Court, in their discussion of spot zoning as cited in Avenida San Juan Partnership versus City of San Clemente, 2011 201 Cal, appellate 4, 1256, noted that "the essence of spot zoning is irrational discrimination." In other words, it typically has to do with favoritism, prejudice, discrimination, private inurnment, or otherwise done without proper findings, public benefit, or merit. None of this applies to PPD zoning or any of the proposed projects in Fairfax. In addition, that planning commission meeting went to 1:00 AM, and the planning commissioners never saw all of the changes they made to the 14-page ordinance in print before they voted on it. The video makes it clear the commissioners did not vote on a finished document. This was improper, and state regulations require that under such circumstances, a meeting must be continued so that commissioners can review the amended zoning ordinance as a finished product and allow the public to be able to read the final document before the vote can be taken. At the Fairfax Town Council meeting of January 24, 2017, the Fairfax Town Attorney advised the town council and planning commission on the state bonus, density bonus law, and the condominium conversions regulations. The attorney incorrectly stated that even if a parcel is not zoned for density by right and a proposed development application is made, for example, in the current highway commercial CH zone, with a request to trigger the state density bonus law and needing a conditional use permit for residential development, that project cannot be denied. However, that is not correct. That project can be denied for a wide variety of reasons, including environmental and public health and welfare, state bona de densis law or not. What the law says is that if a project is otherwise approved or approvable by all other tests and it qualifies for the state density bonus, that project cannot be denied for the impacts of the state, of the density bonus. The same attorney is also contradicting existing town policy on condominium conversions with her legal advice on approving condo conversions in Fairfax, which is incorrect and contrary to case law. See page 23 of the written staff report dated January 24, 2017. The existing PPD zoning with its three-step process has served our town well for over five decades. It provides Fairfax residents a hearing process that allows public participation to guarantee projects are consistent in scope and scale with Fairfax's character. It is also expedient and does not cause undue delays in processing. For example, the senior Bennett House was processed in less than a year. The three-step hearing process has also allowed Fairfax to protect the interests and future rent structure for Bennett House seniors to guarantee low-income senior housing and low-income rents in perpetuity. Fairfax residents are protective of our small-town values and have historically used both the referendum and initiative process to guarantee compatible zoning and so that the scale of development projects did not, did meet strict height, bulk, and massing limits.
Thank you. Please try to.
Charles Cornwall, 77 Mitchell Drive. Property owners, actually, property owners, business owners, and residents in the neighborhoods which will be impacted by this new streamlining process, including School Street Plaza and Tenalima areas, two of the three opportunity sites identified in the Fairfax housing element, have not been adequately informed about its potential impacts, cumulative impacts, and unintended consequences. Those streets include Park, Merwin, School, Alima, Manor, San Miguel, and SF Drake. The county board of supervisors has very quietly rezoned the Oak Manor 711 Shopping Center in unincorporated Island and Fairfax for mixed-use 30 units per acre, which allows 42 units, not counting any density bonus, at the corner of SF Drake Boulevard and Oak Manor Drive, adding to the cumulative traffic impacts on SF Drake. With regard to the Brown Act and adequate public notice, the agenda for your February 1st, 2017 hearing for item number four is misleading and does not clearly or fully describe the scope of the decision being discussed. For example, consider the description of item number four. Four, public hearing, consideration of an ordinance revising the planned district development ordinance, Town Code Chapter 17 dot 112, to amend the process for three sites identified in the adopted housing element. Here, the agenda only refers to the three opportunity sites, whereas a new streamlining ordinance could potentially affect all six opportunity sites noted in the Fairfax housing element. And once in place, might be applicable to other future opportunity sites as well. State law requires that an agenda must clearly inform the public about what is being deliberated. Finally, no council member with a conflict of interest of any type of beneficial interest can be allowed to vote on this streamlining proposal. Fairfax has recently removed the map with the 500-foot conflict of interest spheres for each council member from the town's website, so we can no longer tell if any conflicts exist. However, Mayor Reed lives close to Tenalima, Councilmember Kohler lives close to the former Lutheran Church property, and Councilmember Goddard is employed by a local nonprofit who rents a School Street Plaza building, and she works at the School Street Plaza site. In closing, we ask that the town council reject the proposed streamlining ordinance and process all applications for development on these three opportunity sites using the town's existing town codes as well as its well-tested PDD process available. Thank you. Residents for sustainable, affordable housing and preservation of community values. Signed, Nicolo Calderaro, Diane Hoffman, Valerie Hood, Deborah Benson, Jessica Green, Rich, Sarah, Todd Greenberg, Helen Faust, Frank Egger, Gina Fard, Denise Larson, Mark Hammerman, Laura Ralph, Kathy Flores, Charles Cornwall, Stephanie Burns, Diana Purdue, Denny Ferry, and Suzanne Chaney.
Thanks.
Thanks. Hi there. Everybody really has their stuff together, and I was just kind of, I tried to put an email together to you guys, and I've been sick for the last few days, so I apologize for the poorly-written email. But really, what I want to say is I appreciate the turn that it seems the council is taking towards guaranteeing the outcomes of these projects be affordable housing and senior housing. I think that's encouraging. I appreciate that. I do want to take to task, though, the lumping together of the sites, one, two, and four. I'm a resident on Alima Road, and seeing how 22 units plus build-out bonus and setback, you know, all the incentives that you talked about at the last meeting, how that would impact that neighborhood with the shape of that property and the way it's laid out, I think it's important to know what the project is before it's approved and before it's rezoned. And whether that's spot zoning or something else, I think it seems to me backwards to open things up to possible overdevelopment and encroachment on creek passageways and deer paths and trails and, you know, encumbering traffic and parking and all those things without knowing what the project really is. So I would encourage you not to streamline the process and to not decrease the acre requirement wholesale or even for those three sites, but to keep it at five acres. Victory Village, there's a lot of land up there that could be spread out, it could be, you know, redone, I don't know. But 1.2 acres is 1.24 acres. And I just, I would hate to see something go in there that doesn't work. I think that five-acre minimum allows for the developer and the community to work together to have proper setbacks and make it fit and work and function, you know? And for 55 years of perpetuity, you know, 55 years of low-income housing of 10% of the units, that doesn't sound right. That doesn't sound right to me. I think, how many generations of elder folks are you going to get through in 55 years? Maybe two or three, and then it goes to fair market? You know, that's just, it doesn't seem to meet the intention. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Dave Lieberman, Excel Construction. I live at 50 Creek Road in Fairfax. I want to thank the town attorney for speaking about streamlining and characterizing these properties as small at two acres and one and a quarter infuriated me to the point of speaking today. I see streamlining in the way it's being characterized as it being a great way to turn Fairfax into Marin City, one small property at a time, without adequate oversight by the processes that we already have in place and without adequate oversight by the citizens that make up this great town. I encourage you to not approve streamlining as it's being characterized now. Thank you very much for your time.
Hi, I'm Lisa Blash. I live on Pacheco Avenue. I just wanted to note that, you know, a lot of us have been really busy over the last couple of weeks considering what's been happening in the world, and it's, you know, a little challenging to prepare for something here in town like this when we've been having so much else going on, but we're all doing our best. And the streamlining process, I am actually very heartened to hear that we're considering making it 100% affordable. I think that's wonderful, and it really speaks to the promise of what we're doing. And the other thing I wanted to note is that, you know, we have a large number of people that have expressed interest in actually seeing particularly the Victory Village project come to fruition. And we have also been talking to people, though, and finding that, you know, they're very worn down by this process that's been going on for so long, and absolutely find it inexplicable that a town like Fairfax would be fighting so hard to prevent low-income senior housing and feeling like it's not the town that we really, you know, know and love. And a lot of them are people who've lived here a lot longer than I have. But I wanted to note that the streamlining has some real benefits, and one of them is that, you know, a lot of us drop out of the community process after a while when you drag things on forever and ever and ever. It's exhausting. A lot of us have actual jobs where we have to work a lot and we have long commutes. So the streamlining would actually make it a lot easier for some of us to understand what's going on and consider it, rather than encouraging more community process. I feel like the dragging it on actually discourages the community from coming so that the only people who come are the most diehard or the people who have the most flexible schedules. So I can see some benefits to it. I'm glad that we're putting some parameters around it. And I just want to note that a lot of people are confused by the planning and zoning issues and just want to see the project happen, and I'm really wondering why it's not happening, you know? We're not asking for massive market rate development or remodel of the town as we know it. We're really interested in furthering our work as a just, compassionate, and tolerant community. You know, we're watching all of this stuff in the world right now where we're trying to keep people who aren't like us out and passing laws to keep those people out, and some of us find that really reprehensible. I'm also going to note that, you know, we're not really talking about Victory Village per se, but there's nothing that precludes local residents from applying for and getting housing at Victory Village. From what I understand, yes, you do have to recruit outside because of fair housing laws, but, you know, the marketing plan for this project, you know, we would be advertising here in town as well. And I don't have a problem with people from outside of Fairfax moving in here. A lot of us didn't come from Fairfax, and we had enough money to buy a house and got to live here as a privilege of having that much money. So I don't know why we have to apply a different standard to low-income people than we apply to those of us who purchase property. So, you know, I'm glad that you're making it a lot clearer what the intention of this ordinance is, and I'd really love it if we could actually proactively go after the types of projects that we want, particularly for School Street. We could do something like Art Space does where it develops low-income artist space for local people and also art space. There's a number of possibilities that we could go for proactively if we kind of opened our minds to what it is we could do proactively rather than thinking about all the worst-case scenarios. If we really set the parameters and go after it, we can have what we actually want and need in town. Thank you.
Thank you. Larry?
Good evening, everybody. Larry Bragman, 30 Hickory Road. And good to see you up there. I kind of miss being there, but you have a very difficult job, and I just want you to know that. to know that from the get-go. I support the project. I don't support the current form of the ordinance. I think you can skinny that ordinance up, and I think there is permissive spot zoning. There was a recent case from 2014, Foothill Communities Coalition versus County of Orange that said the exercise of spot zoning was permissible because it served the public interest by addressing the housing needs of seniors and increasing housing density, which were goals of the specific and general plan. Does that sound familiar to you? This case is on all fours with the fact situation we have in Fairfax, and I think you got to kind of think out of the box in order to make it happen. I was on the council when we first formulated this project five years ago, when Matthew Tompkins came up here from Santa Cruz, and we sat in the sanctuary and did drawings. And even in the midst of the tumult about the implementation of the general plan, the one thing that everybody agreed on was the benefit of this project. So I think we all, and each of us, kind of have to get over ourselves, and we're going to have to work together. We are in precarious times, and we have to assert ourselves as a community in order to protect and promote our community values, and that's affordable senior housing. It's not changing the development pattern in Fairfax. It's not creating a generic exception to development patterns that have really come to characterize Fairfax. Any exceptions to that need to be very carefully written, and I think you can essentially create an exception here that would benefit this project, which is the one project that all sides agree should move forward. And I think you need to do that under the law that's been given you under this case, Foothill Community versus Orange County. I just want to say generally, you know, as far as the traffic impact, that site was the site of a school and a community church. The school had 63 students, 18 staff, so you had 81 people coming in and out of there every day, Monday through Friday. Sundays, you had a congregation. I think it's going to be pretty much of a wash on traffic impact. I think some of the impacts can be mitigated. The one thing I would also ask you to take a look at is, under the ordinance, the Planning Commission has the authority to accept or reject a plan. I think you've got to add the word "modify." I think the community has to have assurance that the input they're getting will be significant, not an up or down vote. And the last thing I want to say is, I actually don't like the streamlining process. It frontloads the process, so you don't really get the time to kind of go through a deliberative process. You get far less opportunity to do it. That being said, we are where we are. I don't want to see the project smothered in the crib, and I think each side has to compromise. And I think you have the legal authority to focus this ordinance on this project, get it off the ground, and it'll be something we can all be proud of, and that we should all be proud of if we all feel our voices are heard. Thank you.
Diane Hoffman Portius. And I just, listening to the comments from most of you on the council, I have a very good feeling. I was impressed by a lot of your questions to the attorney. On the other hand, this does not seem like just an attorney to me. You seem like you're advocating a plan and pushing a plan and not just giving legal opinions, and that doesn't feel right to me. It's like, who are you representing? Who is the Planning Commission? It's like, you're really pushing something that we don't want, and I really feel good about your questions. You're really paying attention, and it feels like, for once, we're being listened to. It just, the Victory Village, I think it's a good thing. We need something for seniors. It should be for always, not just for 55 years, and that's what we should be talking about. But instead, we're talking about this rider sticking on Tenno Lima, sticking on School Street, streamlining. We don't need to be dealing with that. We're dealing with Victory Village. That's what we should be dealing with, and what's happening is you are ruining things for Victory Village.
Hi, Robert Antis, Two Snowden, Fairfax. Gosh, I don't really even have to talk again. Every time I get online, most of what I have to say has been said. My concern really is that, as it stands right now, if we approve streamlining of Victory Village, we're by definition approving the streamlining of the other two properties. And my concern is that we could lose support for Victory Village, because not everybody would necessarily support the streamlining of the other two properties. And I would like to see Victory Village go through. Certainly, it's been trying very hard to do that for the last four years. I agree with the first gentleman who spoke. I'd like to see them, they have taken a certain route, and on the advice of the town planners, and I don't want to see them get buried in process. So I'd like you to look at whatever latitude you have legally and professionally to expedite Victory Village. I come back to Councilmember Weinstein's original question, is can we drill down on that one property? I'd like to see that done, if it's possible, and do it quickly, and then revisit the other properties if you have to in the future. I did like hearing what people had to say about narrowing the criteria for those other properties and making them 100% affordable, in perpetuity, as far as I'm concerned. I would love to see that. The more demands we can make in that way, I think the more comfortable people will be in the future if they have to consider properties there and rezoning there. Anyway, lastly, I'd like to just go over zoning numbers again. I was reading the general plan in the housing element, and the special opportunity sites and downtown Fairfax, if I'm reading this correctly, are all zoned for 20 units per acre, and I've been corrected several times by different people who say, no, that's not the intent. And I think that's probably not the intent. However, those numbers are still in there, and I believe that if a developer were to come along, and those numbers are still in our general plan, I think the developer would have the right to ask for those numbers, when in fact, we actually have an intent for lower numbers than that. I actually have the pages, it's the housing element, page 11, where it says, upon certification of the 2010 housing element by HCD, the town proposes to rezone most of the CH properties to CC, which will allow residential units on the second floor to a minimum density of 20 units per acre by right, rather than by conditional use permit only, as is the case under CH. And then those properties are listed later on page 22 as Fairfax Market, Fairland-Selm Shopping Complex, Center Oaks Apartment Buildings, and the East Side Commercial Area of Sir Francis Drake Boulevard. So those are all zoned for 20 units per acre, as it stands right now, and so are the PDD properties listed as special sites. And there's a map, looks like this, and there's a little square on each one of the properties that says 20 units per acre. So please revise that to agree with the zoning that is intended, unless I'm wrong about that, but...
Can I speak to that for one second?
Yes, please, yes.
So the zoning that's intended is the zoning that will exist when that rezone from CH to CC takes place. That is where the 4.5 units per acre of density will become part of the zoning. Right now, we're existing under the original, the old zoning of CH, which is 20 units per acre.
So that will be changed in the general plan and the housing, once this rezone...
Yes, once the rezone is in place.
Okay, big concern. Thank you very much.
Miriam Weinstein, your token low-income renter here. I just have a few comments. I feel like with the streamlining, I feel like the people in town are playing defensive here, that you get a project, and it's like presented to you, kind of a fait accompli, here it is, we've done all the work, we've put all this energy into it, and we're going, wait, wait, we haven't even seen it yet, and it's streamlined, it's moving ahead in the process, and the energy is go. Victory Village, I wrote to you about that, Renee, about seeing if there was a way, they said they would, but they never did, find out if there's some way, if we could get sufficient private funding, that we could get local preferences, because the Marin County money is, I believe, $500,000 that they're giving from the federal government. That comes with the strings that we have to open it up to surrounding counties. The other one is the Section 8 apartments, and I don't know if the whole building is planned for Section 8, or just some of it, and I asked Carolyn Buchhardt to find out if the restrictions could be for only those units and not for the entire thing, project. Because I think honestly, I may be fooling myself, we have a very rich person in the area who's very interested in senior housing, affordable housing, workforce housing, and he's willing to put up tens of millions of dollars to do that, and his project has stalled. And if it all took was a million dollars from George Lucas to get this to be local preferences, I think that's worth investigating. I'm sure you guys all mean senior affordable housing, but everyone's just been saying senior housing.
Just to give you the line on that, this is from a meeting from a year ago, December. The affordability for a unit, my recollection, between $600 and $900 per month.
I was just saying that people have been using the phrase senior housing, as opposed to senior affordable housing, because if senior housing is all you're looking at, it could come in at $2 million.
Affordable is definitely in there, even though we're not saying the words every time.
I figured that, I just wanted to clarify that. And then, there is that new law that someone else referred to, I don't think it's passed yet, I'm not sure it's the same law, sponsored by Senator Lee in San Francisco, and if that passes, and Jerry Brown will certainly sign it if it passes, we can no longer do the modus operandi of, we've met the goals on paper, we will have those housing units shoved down our throats. So I'm wondering if there's some association of small-town governments that could advocate for small towns and give us more of a united voice, so that the one-size-fits-all plans that make sense for San Francisco, or Berkeley, or Oakland, or LA, that don't make sense for us, that we could have, maybe you could just have some little consideration cut out for small towns, built on steep hills with only one ingress and outgress, and we're not a typical town, not just in terms of who we are, but geologically, geographically, whatever it is. We've got problems that other places just don't have, and it'd be nice if there was a group advocating for small towns. Thank you.
Mallory Geidheim, Willow Avenue. I'll start by saying I am very in favor of affordable housing and very against this time, this new situation of streamlining. And for me, the streamlining part is, I think, for the benefit of the Planning Commission and nobody else. So if the Planning Commission is having a problem spending all the time, then they should quit the Planning Commission and have people who want to be there and do this, the way you guys spend all time here. I don't know. Oh, really? Oh, oops. Okay. But the difference is, I mean this. And, all right, so, speaking of affordable housing, Fairfax has an affordable housing committee, and I would like to know, who is the town or council member who should be overseeing this? Well, I'm on the committee, and we haven't met for over a year, and I would like that to happen, so that you could have representatives from town on the affordable housing committee giving you some input. This thing about, it's small, it's small, it's small. I remember years ago when they wanted to put casinos here, and they put that for a vote, and it was only going to be a small, little thing, not in Fairfax and Petaluma, and people voted yes, and now casinos kind of have taken over in a much bigger way. And this is going to creep up. Everything that we talk about that's small, you just, you start, and you have two stories, then you have three stories, then you have four stories. I don't like that whole idea. You open the door, and then it just becomes a really open door, and it gets way more The other thing is, if, I was walking through the School Street Plaza the other day. It is such a quintessential part of the reflection of what Fairfax is and who the people in Fairfax are. I don't really want to see it turned into condos for people who aren't, this is what's happening, the mission is happening in every single community where artists and creative people are trying to live and stay, and that's what we're going to do here. We're going to wreck that, too, and I don't want to see that happening. And the other thing is, if you, if you on the council really want to understand what's happening in Fairfax, go on Nextdoor. A week ago or so, Diane wrote a really, I think, significant opinion, and there are so many people responding to it. If you want to see what's going on in Fairfax, read that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Rebecca Collins. I live at Monta Vista Road, and I've lived in Fairfax for, I don't know, at least 30 I just want to say, what I have seen in this process is a town council who is truly being thoughtful, and a staff who's truly being thoughtful, and it seems to me that, you know, we are being heard. And I'm concerned that it has been 30 years since there has been, to my knowledge, an affordable housing project here in Fairfax. And if a streamlining process is done in the way that I heard it tonight, where you are asking that it be 100% affordable, and you're asking for all these restrictions to be in place, I personally don't have a problem with that. I think that it sounds to me like there are a lot of constraints. Now, I'm not a lawyer, there's a lot of things that I may be missing here, but I think it's important to, as a community, have a message to the broader world that Fairfax is a place that makes it viable to come in and have low-income housing. And if people who are working as professionals also embrace that, I don't really see what is a problem with that. It's a human ability to be compassionate and to embrace the value that we are meeting people's needs. I understand, I mean, that there is a desire that only people in Fairfax are served first and are a priority, and I know that that's not a prerogative of this council. At the same time, what is wrong with having an open application process? I just, like, how can we just close off our community? I think it's really important, and I think that if we are doing things, like I said, to, you know, invite viable, affordable housing to come to this community in a way that... affordable housing to come to this community in a way that respects the environment, respects the people here, then I support it. And I thank all of you.
Yeah, hi, my name's Jake Simon. I live on Olima Road. I was born in Fairfax in '73. And I just want to give you two cents. I don't have legal information in front of me either, but I'm in favor of a non-streamlined process. I think it's important to go through the entire process as slowly and methodically and carefully as possible. I'm for affordable senior housing. I just want to see it done right. Thank you.
Good evening, council members. My name is Alicia Klein, and I work for Resources for Community Development, which is the nonprofit affordable housing developer that Christ Lutheran Church selected to bring their vision for affordable senior housing to their campus. And I just wanted to make a couple of comments about some of the issues that have come up tonight. And, yes, yes, okay. Is that better? Just to give a little bit of background about the process that we have been through. We have been working with staff for many years, for about four, almost five years. And came to the Planning Commission for a study session over a year ago, where we presented alternate site plans. We got a lot of feedback from the, from community members and the, and the commission. And that's reflected in the new plans. And we've been to, since submitting our application last year, we've been to one Planning Commission and probably will, or actually, two Planning Commissions, and will probably be going to one or two more. So that will be a total of five meetings that we will have presented to, to the Planning Commission. About another four or five to you guys, too, as part of the streamlined process. I did consult with our land use attorney in preparation for this proposed streamlining to ask the question that came up at the Planning Commission of, could the Planning Commission or the town limit the streamlined process to just one site? And the guidance that I received, and I'm not an attorney, so I may not be saying this in a technical way, but that, in her opinion, as Alicia Guerra with Bush Altun Nemer, that would not be considered spot zoning. That is, there is a mechanism for jurisdiction to make a process that applies to a specific set of sites. Of course, we defer to the town attorneys. But we will separately be coming forward with the proposal, with the actual zoning. So I just offer that up, and appreciate your consideration.
Got to ask you a question. Would the streamlining as proposed here tonight have lessened the number of meetings that you would have gone to? Or would you have done a substantial amount of outreach in any case?
It, I think this streamline does reduce the number a bit of iterations, because my understanding is that it would have been three, you know, three stages, each of which would, so a minimum of five meetings, but as, I mean, so, it's kind of, it's unknown to me, because it seems that, in order to reach, anyway, I don't know. So it went from five to...
It's a difficult question for her. I think it's true, if she, Alicia is correct, that we did have special study sessions with the Planning Commission to talk about this project. Conceptually, because we knew we wanted to get it out there, what are the key issues? They held a community meeting with the neighborhood. Those are things that would still happen. But if you're saying, if we had a three-step process, would that be more meetings than, even though we're going to lots of meetings now? Sure, I suppose you could say that. But what's the right number of meetings? 20, 30, 10, 15? I mean...
I guess the question I have, Ms. Klein, is I'm trying to figure out whether this proposal is, wow, that's really beneficial. That would have helped us out. And in fact, going forward, whether this process was here or anywhere else, that would really advance our goals. Or, you know what? We're the kind of operation where we recognize we want to have a number of public meetings. And regardless of your process whatsoever, we're always going to step over that and provide even more access.
This streamlined process, so, kind of yes and yes. We always will do an outreach to the neighborhood, which we invited the immediate neighbors to an information session at the church in the fall, and to present and discuss any questions. But this streamlined process is definitely a, does facilitate the development of affordable housing. It does create a path where it could be presented in an efficient manner rather than over years of time.
Would the criteria, one of the things that we've been discussing earlier, were, you know, what criteria we might, we're considering for projects that qualify for streamlining. Would the criteria of 100% senior housing...
It's affordable.
100% affordable senior housing, would that meet the criteria of what your project is?
Yes, it would. We do have one unit for, and one apartment for the resident manager, but other than that one apartment, it will be 100% affordable.
Okay. And then, is your project, as you're anticipating it, is it considered, I'll take that back. Okay, that's what I wanted to ask you.
Thank you.
Hang around.
Thank you. Next.
Hello, Rick Hamer, Bellinas Road. You know, I wasn't going to come up here about this particular subject, but after hearing Mr. Bragman make his point, you know, I realized, and I thank him for doing that, I realized that the, including bundling the smaller properties, that would be Ten Olima Road and School Street, if you can get those things out of the bundle, it sure, I would be so much more comfortable with it. I think that they just don't belong bundled. And if there is legal case law that allows the council to, to address streamlining to other parcels other than those at this time, I'm for it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, Tishung, 31 Olima Road, across the street from the Mandarin Garden Place. I want to say, affordable housing for Victory Gardens, I mean, it doesn't seem streamlined to me. I've been, you know, I read the draft of the general plan 10 years ago, and, you know, I've been paying attention to this issue. This project's been, we've seen drafts of it for five years. It's not a streamline. We know what they're doing. And so I do have concern about the bundling of Ten Olima and School Street Plaza, because I have no conceptual vision of what that looks like. You know, I have the property across my street, my neighbor's here. Jake is right, he spoke a few minutes ago. You know, the creek runs through there. As I read the general plan, the 1.24 acres it's owned counts the street, the creek bed. So, you know, in all of that property. So, and our general plan is really clear, 22 units minimum, 23 maximum, or something like that. And then, of course, with the offsets that you can get, could change that or other variances, granted, depending on the level of affordability, et cetera. So, I guess it's hard to say, I'm fine with the PDD. I've been talking to my neighbors about it. But it's hard to say, yeah, streamline that process. I don't know what I'm streamlining. And though I respect our town, and I think that we'll be present, and that the councils will provide these teach-ins, et cetera, that we've done in this long, drawn-out process, I don't know what the council looks like in five, 10, 15 years, when somebody actually comes with a proposal. I don't know how quickly it will move through those processes. I don't know how, whether they'll involve the community early in, especially the neighbors early in, for a really thorough understanding. And I really want to see that affordable housing, because I see the character of the town changing, because the people who work in this town can't afford to live here. And I know we can't guarantee that, but I'm a strong supporter of the affordable housing. So if we can make it 100% affordable, and if we could decouple it, and so we can allow the senior housing project to go, and let's de-escalate the situation, I think it would be good for the community, and still allow us to get a PDD passed and thoroughly vetted in some process in the future when some plan is presented to the council. So thank you.
Thank you.
Two questions.
Yes?
Just, if public comment's completed. I have two questions for, I think, council. Let me see if I can drill this down. Really, you have a few questions, too. I have just a few questions. Is this statement correct? So if a developer wants to avail itself of the revised, proposed PDD streamlining and be a qualifying site, it would have to come forward and be a 100% affordable project on a less-than-two-acre site? You want me to do it again? So you're a developer, actually, want to come into town. If you want to come under this proposed conversation of a streamlining, and get the revised PDD streamlining, and be a qualifying site, okay, you must be a 100% affordable project on a less-than-two-acre piece of property.
But that needs a general plan amendment, because the opportunities, the qualified sites are called out distinctly in the general plan. So you can't just come in and say, I'm going to do it like this, and I want to qualify as a qualified site.
That's a really good point. So let me, let me, that's a really good point.
It's not the size that defines it.
So let me, so let me ask you this, Renee. So in other words, in the, in the wrap, I want to divide the wraparound as opposed to just focusing on the Victory Village. In the wraparound process, you only get to be the School Street and the Ten Olima if you fall under these very strict restrictions. In other words, you're going to have to be 100%, we're talking about here. And you have to be this miniscule, shall we say, site. If you're not one of those, so, those two developers, if you're not going to commit to just having the small site and 100% affordable, you're not going to be a qualifying site under the streamlining. That's a question.
That's how I understand. The council wishes to limit this ordinance. That's correct.
Okay. The second point I want to bring up is, let's talk about the Foothill case. You can.
John, did you close the public hearing? I didn't hear that.
Yep, I didn't officially. Is there anybody else from the public who hasn't spoken, who wants to speak?
Okay, good.
Okay, seeing none, I will now close the public.
So let's, so that was the first part. Oh, fuck. No, we closed a public hearing.
Well...
But that's, 100% would be new language to be, to be in the amendment. That's not the way it's in current.
That's the fun of being up here. We amend things as we go along.
Now, hang on. For the public record part, yeah, I mean, did you speak earlier?
Yes.
You did. Okay. But there's a problem with people calling out, because there's no microphones there, and this, you know, this needs to be a public thing, so...
Do you want me to ask a question?
No, I'll ask you a question. What is... Question was, as we go through this process, what we do is, we work with the language, tease the language, as we hear back from staff, council, or conversation, what we heard from you. And we work to see if we can refine the text as we go forward. So the second thing is, when the two of you were ready, you got to take us through the Foothill matter on the spot zoning.
Indeed.
So the Foothill case has been brought up a couple of times this evening, and it is helpful and illustrative to a point. But I think there are some differences that we should keep in mind, too. So in the Foothill case, which comes to us out of Orange County, which is in a different appellate division than we're in, the Catholic Church owned a seven-acre parcel in a portion of the unincorporated county. The county's general plan designated that parcel for single-family home development. But the church wanted to bring in a project that would be multifamily, I believe it was 153 units of senior housing. And so they sought a general plan amendment to re-designate the land use designation for their site, and rezone that site to a wholly new zoning district. And I think they called it Senior Residential Housing Zoning District. So they changed the entire district. They didn't change a process that would apply to this district. They actually created a whole new district just for this one parcel. And the project was approved, and some project opponents later challenged it, saying, well, hey, that's spot zoning. You've created a singular new district that has different zoning regulations than its neighbors, and that's impermissible by law, and you can't do that. And the court came back and said, well, it is spot zoning. You're right. Spot zoning can happen when you have either more or less restrictions applied to a particular site. But it's okay, because it advances substantial public policy. And those public policies were the development of senior housing, and the goals and objectives in the county's own general plan documents that identified the facilitation of senior housing as important. Now, why I say this is different, is that we're not talking about a single zoning district. We're not talking about creating a single zoning district, because the general plan and the housing element, particularly the general plan that's been on the books for five years now, didn't direct us to create a new zoning district for these individual projects. It directed us to take a look at the process that apply to these projects. So that's why we're in a little bit of a different position here.
As we know, from our collective experiences as lawyers, it's quite a rare situation when you can actually pick up case A and apply it to your case exactly. The facts are always distinguishable and quite diverse. But in your legal opinion, can we rely upon that Court of Appeal decision to spot zone in this matter?
I would say that we could rely on this opinion to narrow the scope of the zoning ordinance amendments, so that they were only available to opportunity sites slated to be rezoned PDD in the housing element, that also bring 100% affordable projects for a specific duration. I think we can go there under this case.
Can we, in this matter, split, and this is something I'm just not clear about, can we, in our conversation, split off the senior housing in Victory Village from the other two sites? We call them opportunity sites, qualifying sites, in our general plan. But today, do we, can we apply the streamlining provisions here and shoehorn in this Victory Village matter?
So, we started the evening by saying, we don't recommend revising our zoning processes as they apply to a single site or a single project. We recommend revising our zoning processes so that they give us a platform to review those types of projects that our general plan, it looks to encourage, affordable housing and senior housing, not for the benefit of a single project or a single site.
Okay. And thank you for reminding us of that. And reminding us also that the major thing we want to do here is get an affordable senior housing, that's a called-out goal of this community. I guess my question to you is, we have three sites. Two of them are unborn at the moment. They are merely speculative. One, as John elucidated on, was absurd at the School Street as presented. And the other one is by a distant landowner who we haven't heard from in a long time. But we do have the most important of the three, and the largest of the three, right in front of us. Why would we not Foothill case that matter and finish it? Congratulate ourselves, invite the new members of the community in, stop. And leave aside the other two and not go forward with the zoning? Now, should the time arise sometime in the future where a... Now, should the time arise sometime in the future where a lot of developers are coming in and saying, "Boy, you know, we want to do some of that type of housing here," but that's an onerous process, three-step process here. We need to see and would appreciate a streamlined version, then revisit it at some future date. But to just double back on what I just said, why can't we just Foothill this project and then leave this aside for another time if necessary?
So in Foothill, the general plan was actually revised to incorporate a whole new zoning district, the Senior Residential Housing District, and then the zoning map of the town was revised to adopt this new district and apply it to one particular site. That's not the direction we have from our general plan. Our general plan says, "Rezone all of these sites, these three sites, PDD, and then change the process of the PDD so that these three sites can qualify where they might otherwise not." We would recommend that we not just Foothill this site because it's not on all fours with Foothill. We're not standing in the same steps as the county was in that case, and we continue to think that if you limit the application of this streamlining to only projects that offer 100% affordable housing projects by virtue of narrowing that, we have one project that's proposing that right now. The other two sites haven't proposed that in any way, shape, or form. Effectively, what it's looking at is what it would be immediately applicable to is just that site, and if those other sites came in at some other date, we would evaluate them. And I know Janet wants to add to this.
And essentially, you understand our role is to give you the most conservative legal advice possible, and we try to keep you safe and we try to keep you from getting sued. If you do get sued, you can't control that all the time, but if you do, that you have a very defensible position. And so that's our goal here, and that's what we're trying to do in the advice that we provide to you. Clearly, this is a council decision, but we're just providing the advice to you that we think is the safest.
If I may add, a non-legal advice from staff perspective is that I think the language that's being proposed by the council about the 100% affordable, I think that achieves your greater goal of what you're trying to achieve. And what you have to think about to the community is that if another site, make it up, Tenolima, came in with 100% affordable project, are you saying that, hmm, that would be a bad thing? If it met that threshold, that's just a bad thing. We don't, we don't want that. They shouldn't be streamlined. And so what we're saying is, 100% affordable is a great over goal of restricted affordable housing. That is something we've always talked about. And we say always, it's been in the general plan, there was a process and was adopted. And I think the way you're crafting it allows you the opportunity that, not that we're talking about specific projects, but allows the one project, the senior project, to move forward as being proposed, at least to go through that process with one application instead of three, and allows the opportunity for the others to consider that if they actually want to achieve the greater goal of affordable housing. And at this point, none of those projects have even indicated that that level of affordability is something they're willing to pursue. Maybe Tenolima at one point talked about 50% affordable housing, but that's not 100%. So that would be my suggestion to the council.
So if you come in and you say, "I want to be 99% affordable," well, I'm sorry there, Mr. Developer, you're going to have to go through the drawn-out three-step process. But if you come in at 100%, now we're talking the streamlined process. But answer one other question. Why couldn't a town Foothill project by project? You Foothill this project, you Foothill that project?
Well, as Katie said, we don't think that this case is directly on all fours. That's a legal, you and I know what that means, perhaps in the community. We don't think it's exactly the same. We think it is somewhat distinguishable. And so noting those differences, noting it's a Court of Appeal from a different appellate district, and noting all of that, we believe that you can achieve pretty much the same thing without taking that extra risk on.
I guess my feeling as an attorney who pays the mortgage by reminding municipalities that they have to comply strictly with environmental laws, that I don't see how, I see the potential for legal risk here, but I don't see anybody suing us over it. I appreciate the conservative advice because that is your role as our attorney in this matter. But I guess my feeling on this, if there's a way around that, and I think of smart meters and other things, where we do take a innovative approach to the law and its applicability to us, and it is true, I won't always sit here and some future counsel won't say, "Well, that was Weinstein's idea. I see we just got hit with $100,000 legal bill. Send it up to 138 Ridgeway." I'm sensing the fact that we're creating a larger framework where there might be a more direct, simple, publicly acceptable, less tumultuous resolution. Yeah, Peter?
So I looked carefully at the Foothill case, too, and I pondered, and I read it carefully, and it does clearly say that we can do, treat different properties differently when there is a public benefit for that. And the public benefit in that case was an affordable housing project built, being built by a church, so those facts line up remarkably well. But I think I would tend to agree with our council that the facts are different in that case, and we're dealing with not rezoning a project, not rezoning a piece of land as they were in Foothill. But we're talking about a general plan that's sort of designated how this property is characterized and can be developed as a PDD. And I think the goal here is to, as someone in the audience said, I didn't catch her name, to decouple Victory Village from the other sites. And I have a lot of concerns about School Street Plaza, especially because in the general plan, it doesn't say it has to be affordable housing. So I think the way we decouple it isn't by rezoning, we can't decouple it by rezoning it differently at this point, but we can decouple it from the other sites by fashioning the criteria that qualifies for streamlining. And we can match the criteria to match Victory Village, not on the basis of we're favoring Victory Village, but on the basis of that it, our criteria support very important public policy to create affordable senior housing. The fact that that project matches that criteria will have the effect of decoupling it without it being spot zoned. And I think that's a little better approach, just because I think if we go the other approach that David is suggesting and that other people have suggested, we might be getting into an area where someone who's opposed to the project might challenge it on the grounds that we improperly gave it a different legal criteria based on its location. And I think if we, we're safer to go with the criteria of 100% affordable senior housing because I don't think any other project is going to come in with that criteria. And if they do, I think it warrants, under those circumstances, public policy, I think that that would warrant, considering the streamlining for a project like that. But the facts are, these other projects are very, very, very unlikely to come in at 100% affordable senior housing. And so I think that's how we decouple this project and allow it to be able to go forward with the benefits of streamlining while preventing other parcels from being streamlined through the PDD process. And I think that's, that's the way to go forward. And it's, we do really want to not allow projects to be streamlined unless they're, you know, they are very beneficial in terms of providing, you know, 100% affordable housing or 100% affordable senior housing. So I think that that's the more conservative way of proceeding that will allow Victory Village to go forward. It will decouple the other projects from going through this streamlined process. And, you know, we've gotten a lot of emails, we read the letter from the residents for sustainable affordable housing, which several people read at the microphone, and I think that's the way forward that will balance these two kind of competing ideas. And additionally, I would also, and I have some ideas about crafting the language for to meet that criteria, and also I would suggest that we include additional findings, and I have some suggestions for additional findings to strengthen the reasons for having the criteria that we're talking about or that we're considering adding to this, to this ordinance.
The question is, does, does any of this matter to Victory Village? They have walked down the path and had so many meetings. Does this project apply to them specifically?
Yeah, David, I think it does. This is one thing that I've been told is, you know, unless, I mean, they're at the point in their process where to go back and go through the three levels would pretty much kill them.
They've gone through the process, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. They've gone through the process based on the assumption of one application, it's all that's needed, because they've come in, in essence, with the proposed plan to start with.
Right.
They didn't go through a preliminary plan, a master plan. They have the one, and that's the approach that we've been proceeding under, and so what we've...
So this is a post hoc sort of proposal to validate what they've already done?
It's the little opposite. We received comments from the community about how could they submit for a certain process if that process did not exist at this time? And so we said, "Okay." In response to that, while it was fine the way we were doing it, let's separate it out. And that's why we've proposing separate out the amendments to the PDD text amendment separate from the project. And so the planning commission won't take action on the project until some action is taken on this amendment, and when it's in effect, then the planning commission may talk about the project, but they can't approve it until the ordinance is in effect.
Okay. So there, while there may be some third way, at the moment, we only have two ways. We can either move forward with the streamlining if we don't want to kill this project. We have to either do the streamlining or Foothill the project?
Or Peter's...
Well, Peter's is the streamlining.
Well, with some very strict definitions.
Streamlining it with the criteria 100% affordable senior housing. But...
Can I, can I ask just a quick question for clarification? Are we talking, because when we read the proposed amendment, we said 100% affordable. And I've heard you use 100% affordable, but I've also heard you use 100% affordable senior. So what, which one are you talking about?
I'm leaning towards 100% affordable senior because there seems to be a lot of concern about opening up the streamlining process to these other, other projects. That's, you know, that's a public, that's a policy consideration. I mean, I'd be amenable to possibly including 100%, you know, low income and/or very low income or 100% affordable senior housing. Because what this is, this is a very volatile, it's, it's a great advantage to allow housing in a PDD to go forward more quickly. We do not want this to fall into the hands of for-profit housing and for, for-profit housing to use a streamlined process because this is something that we're doing especially for affordable housing or affordable senior housing. So, I mean, I would be open to hearing what my fellow council members think if we should just limit it to affordable senior housing or affordable, 100% affordable housing.
I may, well, can I make one quick comment relate, relative to Peter's thing? I might remind you that we also, in that general plan, talked about the need for workforce housing. I mean, it's, I mean, there's people that work in our businesses downtown that can't afford to live here, and that there's many people that, I mean, the housing thing is a crisis, and I'm going to bring that forward at a different council meeting or a different subject, but...
But in fact, that's what was looked at in, you know, the, the idea of looking at three opportunity sites. It was looked at, Tenolima was looked at as potential workforce housing, affordable by design, I believe, 300 square feet. Jim talked about Katrina cottages and...
Yeah, with, there was 14 of them to begin with, and it's...
Well, but I'm just saying that that was certainly in there. But so, so I just have to say something. It sounds great to talk about that in order to receive approval for a streamlined process that the project has to be 100% affordable. But if you have a private owner, say, School Street Plaza, and they want to put in something that they could care less whether it's affordable or not, it's not going to make a lot of difference for them whether they get streamlined or not. So that's not going to be an incentive for more affordable housing to a for-profit developer who just wants to come in and do it. And I think what we're missing, and I understand this is going far afield and I shouldn't do that right now, but we need to talk about real inclusionary zoning in here so that we can make sure that all of our town sites are not vulnerable to just being, you know, thrown at this concept of five units in a 25-unit or a 35-unit development are affordable and have them go through. I don't, I think we're spending a lot of time deciding how we're going to write this streamlining process when what we're really trying to guard against is rampant market-rate housing here that isn't going to meet any of our goals in our limited opportunity sites, not official opportunity sites, but in general, we don't have a lot of opportunity in space for these things. So we are spending a lot of time on this streamlining thing, and I think we need to get really clever right now about how we're going to get that Victory Village process going in a way, and I know we're just talking process here, not approving any kind of a project or a rezone, not doing that. But we need to flush this out a little bit and see what we can do. I don't get the whole decoupling it thing, but I think there has to be a way, maybe we put something on the books that has to do with process for streamlining 100% affordable that allows us to, to approve a process, but really focus in on, I mean, we've all said this, focus in on that project, get that process approved so that we can get through the next several steps of getting that Victory Village going. I've left us exactly where I started, but...
Yeah, okay, one more. Yeah.
Again, I think the simplest way forward is to tighten up the criteria so that they most match, you know, this, this particular project. And we have plenty of grounds for these criteria and, you know, to avoid the, you know, risk of other projects taking... of other projects taking advantage of streamlining. I would also not advocate including streamlining for workforce projects, workforce housing. It's not as high a goal. Workforce housing also could be, you know, at a much higher market level. And the other thing is, these other projects also have plenty of time to go through a regular process. And there's no projects before us for these projects. So if a developer comes in, they, you know, they don't meet the criteria we're setting forth now for the streamlining, they still have an opportunity to go through the regular PDD process, which is where, you know, where things stand now anyway. So I think the way, if we do want to decouple Victory Village, I think we should go with those criteria that we've been discussing and just leave it at that.
Well, Peter, I agree with what you're saying, but I just got to tell you, when young teachers are schlepping in from Yitzchahai to get here, we are losing the next generation of teachers. Workforce housing is the moral equivalent in this community of senior and just low income.
And they don't qualify for low, low income. They have too much income for low, low.
Yeah, it really depends.
Hard to say that about a teacher. Yeah. Yeah, I, I mean, we always, a year or two ago, we were always coming back around to the like, well, the general plan can be modified four times a year, things like that. I mean, and it's a process to go through that, too. And I'm wondering if, I mean, a lot of stuff has come up around School Street Plaza and how it creates a lot of different things. I've certainly spoken to that, you know, and I wonder if that is another thing that we can do down the road, too. You're shaking your head at me, but, no, I mean, I think a lot of this, you know, frankly, I mean, having sat on the general plan advisory committee and getting input for the community for who knows how long, I was doing that for 12 years, but people did it before I got on there. And then you get around to the housing element part, and that's not the part that people really had input in. That was the result of our planning director going back and forth with the state, seeing what they can accept in terms of complying with California law. And then he would bring that back here in this forum to, you know, get that okayed, but that wasn't, you know, a grassroots process. So that gives me pause a little bit. But I think it's just good to check in about things. And I think Peter's approach of, you know, basically define, you know, tightening the definitions of things so that in effect, you know, we're saying, well, yeah, you know, the project that we have on the table here does qualify, and I have some, I mean, we're not talking about whether we're approving that project or not right now. And I have some various ideas on how to solve some of the other problems that the community has brought up, and I've certainly have thought about, too, with that project. But, you know, I think we can get to the point where we have a project that we can be proud of and that serves the needs of Fairfax, you know, without opening ourselves up to something by going through this approach. I mean, I think that that, rather than relying on case law for another city that doesn't, you know, it's, you know, we're not changing zoning. And, you know, initially, when I saw that, you know, that case come up, I thought, oh, well, you know, maybe this is something that we can hang our hat on. But I think your workaround has promise.
My concern is if we try to, as David says, foothill it, I think we do leave ourselves vulnerable to, you know, an illegal governmental process and the project being challenged by someone on that grounds. And I'd rather decouple it by this other means of creating the criteria for streamlining it rather than trying to give one piece of property a different legal process to go through than every other piece of property in town. So that's, I would, there's not any other discussion. I'd like to make a motion towards that effect.
Is there any additional language that you wish to incorporate into?
Yes. What I want to do is I also want to include findings to the effect that, and this could be in the whereas portions, whereas there is a dire shortage of affordable housing in Fairfax and Marin County, and whereas there is additionally a dire shortage of senior housing in Fairfax and Marin County, and whereas Marin County is experiencing the highest percentage growth in population of people age 65 or older of any county in the Bay Area, which has increased from 14% to 18.9% between 2005 and 2013, and whereas Fairfax and Marin County are projected to continue to experience more growth in our senior population. I think those are some findings that would be helpful, and they reflect the reality and the need for us favoring senior affordable housing, such as what I'm proposing. So those are some findings I would also suggest. I'm open to additional findings.
No, no, I was going to say, besides my brilliant scriveting concerns, I was wondering if you were going to incorporate the 100% into some part of the text of the ordinance?
Yes. So my general approach, I think what we need to do, there are two, two sections I would The first section being Section 17.112.010, purpose, sub-paragraph seven, it's the first page of Attachment B. And it says, currently, it says to streamline the review and processing of applications in opportunity sites. I would change that to say to streamline the review and processing of applications for projects consisting of 100% affordable senior housing with, and then continue the rest of the sentence, within the general plan that are directed to be rezoned to PDD by the general plan and where it says in quotes qualifying sites.
I think we need to, I would propose that we add not just senior, 100% affordable senior housing, but I don't know if, it sounds like you don't want to go as far as to say workforce, but I definitely think we just need low and low income.
Can I ask you a question that might make this whole process a lot easier? You two are better at it than all of us. If we give you general ideas, do you have to hear the exact specific language out of our mouths? Can you take the ideas and come back in the next meeting? And that will not be a first meeting, but a first hearing, but a second?
No, we should do it.
If you're going to introduce it tonight, I think that the best thing to do is to take the form that you have in front of you and add to that, because that includes the planning commission's changes, if you're okay with those, and then add to that. And it's probably going to be no more than a couple of changes to that.
Right. And I have one other, one other section that I would propose changing.
Wait, could you read, could you read back what we've just decided on the 1010, on the purpose?
Yeah, so what I would propose, how that would read with my proposed changes, the last sub-part seven, to streamline the review and processing of applications for projects consisting of 100% affordable senior housing, opportunity sites within the general plan that are directed to be rezoned to PDD by the general plan, and in parentheses and quotations, qualifying sites.
But we want to talk about, you know, expanding that to workforce housing. Do we have to limit it? Can we?
I don't want to expand it to workforce housing at this time because of the public opposition to expanding the streamlining process. And, you know, if you-
But if you do that, then that means that those other two sites can only be senior housing under this definition.
No, they could be other types of housing. They just-
They just wouldn't come under the streamlined process, right?
They would not be able to take advantage of the streamlining.
So the only streamlined processes would be a senior housing project at Tenalima or School Street.
So I don't think that that's adequate. I don't, I'm not sure that that's going to make a big difference to the opposition, whether we include for young families that are low, low income or workforce. Workforce is one of the problems we have with our traffic situation. We need, and they're not getting paid very much.
So why can't we just say affordable?
That's what I want.
100% affordable. Just leave the senior out. And that way, it's a broad phrase that allows workforce, low income, and seniors.
That is one possibility. It would allow for other projects that were 100% affordable to have the streamlining. It would allow, it's somewhat, it doesn't decouple Victory Village as much from the other projects, but it does create a pretty high bar for projects to enjoy streamlined process for PDD approval. So I would be willing to expand it to include 100% affordable housing because that would embrace senior housing project. It's a policy decision that is, again, it is encouraging more other types of affordable housing. It's a little bit broader, but I would support that. And I would also reiterate, it's a really high bar to meet, and, but it also supports our goals of really advantaging 100% affordable housing. So I would be willing to consider that if that's what the intent of my fellow council people.
John.
Sorry, Janet.
Hi, thank you. So we had also, I think we had added in originally the 55-year deed restricted-
Fifty-five.
Affordable housing.
Yeah, that would have to, I think that would have to be the, yeah, the criteria by which affordable housing is, you know, enforceable.
Do you want to include that in?
Yeah, and I think the, perhaps the place, the other-
It's deed restricted for 55 years. Is that the language you're looking for?
Yeah. And then the other statute or section to be modified would be 165, one, Section 17.112.165. And I would suggest adding a new subsection A that would read something to the effect of, for purposes of this chapter, which is the streamlining of the PDD process, for purposes of this chapter, qualifying site means an application to build 100% affordable housing on one of the opportunity sites identified in the general plan, and incorporating the definition with the deed restriction of 55 years. And then one concern I have, too, is that, and let me ask counsel on this, do we need any language in there that would make any rezoning of a qualifying site that was done pursuant to the streamline action conditioned upon constructing affordable housing? In other words, if a project gets approved for PDD and, you know, they end up selling it for whatever reason, would that PDD zoning, could a for-profit, you know, housing developer use that PDD designation?
Has this requirements or runs with law?
Generally, they have to build it as approved. So if a deed restriction is required, they have to demonstrate there's a 55-year deed restriction recorded on the property for 100% of the units, unless the manager unit.
Yeah, I do.
Okay.
And I think that it would be better if we just tried to put these criteria in one place as opposed to two.
Okay.
I think if we were using it upfront in seven, if we say, applications for projects consisting of 100% affordable housing with 55% or 55-year deed restriction for opportunity sites within the general plan that are directed to be rezoned to PDD by the general plan, per in qualifying sites, that defines qualifying sites.
Okay. So you would recommend having that in the first section as sub-part seven?
And just for clarification, we could have a subsection A, for example, that further clarified that affordable housing is those definitions set out in Health and Safety Code, Section 50079.5 and 50105. So we're actually capturing a widely understood definition of affordable housing, and it wasn't a subjective issue for every new council.
Okay, I like that, because that's a, that's a hard and fast definition.
Is that it?
Okay. Any other thoughts of moving forward?
Okay. So, want to move to that effect?
So, should I restate the motion?
Well, let's just, just have some clarity. What you're looking for is all of the changes that were presented to you from Planning Commission, the red line, plus the addition of the new whereas clauses that you've listed out, plus the language we just read in the first section, 17.112.0107, A7. Is that correct?
Yes. And then additionally, adding a definition of affordable housing to, would that be to section 165? Or would that be to section 010?
I think section 010, so the entirety of the definition can be found in one spot.
Okay.
If you like, in section 165, we could have a cross-reference, qualifying sites as defined in section 162.010.
That sounds like a good idea.
I want that as part of my motion. And just for the record, could you read, what is affordable housing as defined by Government Code, Section?
Yeah, it's actually Health and Safety Code, Section 50079.5 and 50105. And those two sections define low and very low income standards, respectively.
Okay. And Madam Clerk, did you get my findings, or do you want me to read those or those?
We have it all, actually.
Yeah, okay.
Because you did send the email previously with some of your thoughts, and so we have that cross-reference. But it ran into the record, so I think we have every word.
Okay, very good. So that is my motion.
Do I hear a second?
I will second.
So we have a motion, Locke, second, Goddard. All those in favor of this?
Aye.
Aye. That's four, zero. Ten-minute break, anybody else?
Yes, please.
Yeah, okay. That will bring us up to 10 o'clock. So, yeah, we'll look at what we're gonna, yeah, we'll take a break, get Barbara back, and then we'll decide what we're going to talk about tonight. Yeah, we should come back into, anyway, let's reopen the thing, and I guess our attorney, Janet, has got it.
I think you should clarify, your last action was introducing the ordinance. I think you should clarify, your last action was introducing the ordinance. And so you were introducing and waiving the first reading of the ordinance, amending Fairfax Town Code, Chapter 17.112. And that was with all of the changes that were discussed. Was that the intent of the motion?
Yes, I, despite the form, you know, perhaps failing to state that formal language, but that was my intent, was to introduce and waive the first reading of the ordinance, amending Fairfax Town Code, Chapter 17.112, and of course, including all of the changes that we discussed.
And the second is acceptable with that?
All you did was add the language, right?
It was the, clarifying the intent was to waive first reading and introduce the ordinance.
Okay, yes, I second.
Okay.
Okay.
That you're, you're fine with that as a second?
Yes, I am.
All right, that's, and the vote remains the same. And I believe Frank wishes to comment on that, so why don't you let Frank comment on that?
Okay, I believe the vote would remain the same on that, but.
If I may, Frank Agar, 13 met away, your vote was concluded. A motion is second was made, the vote was taken, it is done. Now your attorney wants you to redo your motion. It's too late to have her do that.
Frank, if I may.
In fact, I, I can assure you that what you're about to do is a violation of the law.
It's not a revote, Frank. It's just a clarification of what that motion was, for the record.
Everybody has left the building.
It's merely a clarification, it's not a revote.
Well, let's see what the judge says, okay? You should, you, you give such bad advice to this town council, I can't believe it. I'm astonished at the kind of advice you're getting, especially from your attorney.
Yeah, I, I, please refrain from belittling, but, but I appreciate your concern and, and I, you know, I.
The motion was concluded. You operate under Robert's Rules of Order, I know how it works.
That's correct. There was no revote. We were clarifying what that motion was.
That was no, that was your attorney trying to get you out of legal trouble. That's what she's trying to do here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Frank.
I appreciate your comment.
Thanks.
Hey, where's Barbara?
Barbara Kohler. You're gonna go, okay. Oh, here she is. So you are listening from the next room.
Thanks for alerting us to that, Frank, and I'm hoping it all works out all right.
All right. So, the 10 o'clock rule.
Okay, so.
The 10:30 rule?
Well, 10:30.
Can I make a recommendation that we put off since it's not immediate, the marijuana and the Airbnb to a future meeting and take up number six, the assignments, number eight, of course, the need for the ordinance on smart meters and the approval of the town manager's employment agreement.
And the special meeting to authorize me to send the letter to PG&E as well.
Yeah, that's a separate special meeting, but yeah, we can put that in the middle.
At the end, we can do it right at the end. Okay, great.
I would second that.
You would second it? I mean, the.
Yeah, could we have a vote on that? Do you have a vote on my motion?
It seems like we could get through that pretty darn quickly.
Yeah.
Because none of those are short, and so we're gonna sit here for an hour and talk
about marijuana or Airbnb. So I would like.
So when else are we going to do that?
The next meeting when actually somebody in the public might actually, no offense, but a greater number of folks in the community, these are important matters. Marijuana and Airbnb have large impacts on communities. We should discuss it in an hour when the people are here.
I would like to.
All right.
Look for a show of hands of who is here for what item. Airbnb, one, two. And the marijuana ordinance, one, two, three. Right, so we have.
So we have people here, but that doesn't change the fact that these are large issues before our community and doing them late at night.
I also think as far as the marijuana, even though, I'm sorry, we have folks that have waited for that, is that we have time on this. And I know we've continued to sort of move them along, but we still, we still have time. And so really, it just seems like in order for us to try to accommodate what people have asked us to do to get done earlier and try not to do the big ticket things.
Yeah, well, I can totally appreciate that, too.
Can I request, though, that we do the marijuana next time, please, in March? Are we also reviewing the indoor smoking at the March meeting?
That, that's correct, we are.
So could we make sure that comes early-ish on the agenda?
So they're both kind of interrelated, so. Janet, since people have come here, can we at least hear a public comment on something that is now not on the agenda?
No, no, no. You're either gonna open it and listen to the item, hear public comment, or you're not. I mean, if you're gonna continue it to the next meeting.
It becomes something that's not on the agenda.
Then that goes completely to the next meeting, yes.
But. Great, I made a motion, can we vote on this and move on?
Could you repeat the motion?
Yeah, very simply. It's, it's a motion that we take up number six, number eight, number nine, special meeting as well, and that we consider the marijuana under number five and the Airbnb short-term rental, if you will, under number seven at a subsequent meeting. And Barbara seconded it.
You're still seconding?
Yes, I'm still seconding.
So we have a motion and a second, Wine Soft Kohler. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, okay, that's, you know. Okay, so we're continuing the non-medical marijuana hearing as well as Planning Commission recommendations regarding short-term rentals, numbers five and seven. And next up is number six, discussion consideration of board and committee member assignments for 2017. I want to take your way.
Yes, Mayor. Every year you discuss your, review your council assignments to the various boards, committees, JPAs. And on the back of the staff report, you'll see the current situation, and this is just for you to discuss whether you'd like to continue or change things around. Also, Councilmember Goddard is requesting one change, and that is to add a council member to the monthly Chamber of Commerce. Well, maybe I'll let you discuss what you want to do with the Chamber of Commerce.
Yeah, there's been discussion, John and I have both been meeting with them, me as carrying over from last year, and there's been talk on the, with, within the chamber to start a sort of a downtown business association. And I was proposing that to, to sort of capitalize on this continuity and the relationships that have been established in the prior year, that perhaps the new mayor would come in and the, the outgoing mayor would stay on in some kind of a capacity like the liaison to this downtown committee. And it, it does make sense in that new mayor's coming in, every mayor will be different in terms of how they want to play that role, but often all that continuity is lost. So projects may be midway, may have started discussions about something, and it sort of abruptly comes to an end. So I, I think it behooves us to have those relationships be able to, to grow over a two-year period, like the Citizen Disaster Council.
Well, I think I would say that I don't, that's not how it's written here, it's probably a misunderstanding, but I really think that there's no problem with whoever the mayor having the previous mayor sit in on a few meetings, and if that person wants to continue and the mayor decides that's fine with them. I mean, I don't, I personally don't agree with adding a new person to that meeting. It becomes more difficult to schedule, and I really do think that it's a discretion of whoever the mayor, you know, how they want to play it. And I think, I think it does make sense to have one or two meetings where that old mayor sits in to make sure you don't lose anything. But I know when I stopped being mayor, I felt like a little bit like I wanted to go, but then I just, I don't think anybody missed a beat because Garrett was always involved. So I don't think we have to do anything formal. I, I think we should just stay with.
Just leave it to the discretion of the, of the incoming mayor.
And if John is good with you staying involved for as long as you want, then that's, that's his and Peter or whoever the next mayor is, you know, everybody can take it their own way.
Yeah, I mean, I do think that in terms of policy, it's good to overlap a little bit.
Yeah. But you can do that informally.
Yeah, and you can do that informally. I mean, I think especially in light of these, you know, this proposal the chamber is going about, which is something that, you know, got worked out under your tenure, Renee. It seemed fitting. Also, you know, I mean, there's dance partners, I mean, I gotta say, in, you know, the past, you know, there's been times when the chamber's fallen apart, too. So, you know, there's, it's, it's not a constant thing, you know? It's, it's good to be able to flex with whatever the needs are at the time, so.
If I may just jump in on, y'all, I'm sorry?
I've got a couple that I would need to change.
Go right ahead.
Okay. So I have been on the Climate Action Committee for a couple of years. I think that we have moved things along quite a bit. I'm happy to go to the next meeting, which is on Valentine's Day, and I've sort of have that on my schedule. I know for most people, that's a big one, so I wouldn't want to impinge on anybody's Valentine's Day. But if someone would be interested in taking that on, I know Peter has a lot of interest in this area, so that might be something he might be interested in. So I just want to mention that I feel like it might be somebody else's turn on that one. And then I just have one quick thing. Is, John, you mentioned months ago that the G-PIC was sort of done, and I'm not sure why it keeps showing up.
Well, the G-PIC had a quorum, and we had an agenda item of sunsetting the G-PIC as an organization, we had, or as a committee, and we had a quorum at a meeting last summer, but there were also two people, maybe three, who weren't at that meeting, and the others at the meeting were uncomfortable making a motion to dissolve that committee without everybody present. So in deference to the others, you know, we continue that to the next meeting, when at that point, we're only meeting every six months, anyway. We were unable to get a quorum for that meeting, so it's, we should have just pulled the trigger, to be honest, but.
Is it something that the council could decide we no longer want that committee? Is that to honor us? I mean, rather than scheduling a meeting just to say we're not gonna have anymore.
Yeah.
Well, anyway.
I mean, you know, I, I think at, at the one last summer, one of the members there, who was no longer a member, she's since retired, she's, you know, came up with a number of loose ends that would be useful to the town for her to do, and she did those actual projects to leave something there that would be useful going forward, and that's something that can grow out of that.
John, on, on the announcement thing, we're actually advertising for a new person.
Which is why I said that's kind of a moot point.
I heard you say that kind of, so maybe we should strike that one off and inform the clerk not to.
I mean, we've got to do things legally, and I think legally, that's why it's on there.
So I guess my question is, is it something that you feel would be honorous if the council decided we weren't gonna have that committee?
Way in here, guys.
I would say, if you like, we will try to get the G-PIC together for a quorum to have this discussion and report back to council. In any event, we'll report back to council, especially if we couldn't get a quorum because no one wanted to show up to talk about.
Yeah, I think it's different schedules and.
Is there still a Measure K Oversight Committee? There's still money in there?
No, there's no funding because you spent it all, but technically you still need one.
Why?
Because it was something that we committed to doing, but it would only meet if there was funding to commit.
Yeah, and in fact, we hadn't met for a long time, and then we renegotiated those bonds and refi-ing, you know, as people do with mortgages. But we did that on the bonds, we came up with another stack of money, and we met and we decided what streets to fix and did that.
The Local Currency Steering Committee.
Was that the Fairbuck?
Yeah, that, that's the Fairbuck.
But we don't have that anymore.
The Fairbuck, there are still funds that are going to different community projects from that.
They got rid of the Fairbuck. I mean, but the Fairbucks, there was an announcement from the chamber that it was.
Yeah, yeah, there was definitely interest from the chamber to not use it as an active currency.
Right.
However, there are still funds that were generated with that.
Okay.
Which, you know, partly are used for, you know, as, you know, occasionally there's, you know, some that's there that wants to be redeemed, but mostly there, that committee still needs to meet and, and decide how to dispose of the last funds. And it's all going to community things.
Okay.
So there's a reason for that.
I have a question. Is there a Measure C Oversight Committee?
I asked that question and Garrett said no. Could you explain why there isn't one?
Is this the sale, I get mixed.
That's the sales tax.
The sales tax doesn't have an oversight committee, it just has a requirement that there be an audit regarding, and we do that.
So one of my concerns is when we did Measure C, we did talk about an independent oversight committee.
I think we went back and looked, and there wasn't an oversight committee, but there definitely was for Measure J.
Okay, I remember putting it out there, so I think we can confirm that, and if we need one, I'm fairly sure it was in the ballot stuff.
And we will double check, because I know we double checked and found it wasn't there, but there was an audit requirement.
Or the ballot, the arguments for. I'm fairly sure it was in there, since I wrote them.
All right, can we move this along? On my stuff, I should have, it should be noted that I'm liaison to Jody Timms's seniors thing. And also, in my many years of being a MIRA alternate and a MIRA second alternate, I have never attended a MIRA meeting, nor have I ever been called upon to attend a MIRA meeting as an alternate. And I'm beginning to think after some years of this, that I will never be called as a MIRA alternate, and thus I think we are on secure ground here, zapping the MIRA alternate position.
I think we're supposed to have one.
Oh, good God. Yes, there is.
Yeah.
So you just never go.
It's part of the JPI.
Okay, there we have it.
Yeah, so Barbara, I'd be happy to take over the Climate Action Committee.
Okay. And can we do something to make it effective March so that I'll still go to that meeting so that Peter won't have to give up his Valentines?
Well.
I have a question.
No, I think that'd be a good, a good transition. Does this meet every month?
Yes, it meets every month, and it's the second Tuesday of the month.
Second Tuesday of the month, okay, great.
And it meets at the youth senior center.
And Renee, you had a question.
Peter, yeah, what's, what's the MCC MC Committee on Sea Level Rise? Does that meet still? Have you ever met?
I think it met once. I was not able to attend that meeting, so yeah, I'm not sure how active that is, I should check into that.
Well, if you, if you, would you, would you be willing to cede that to me?
Sure.
I think MCC MC has to decide that. I don't think, I don't think we can decide that. I think you.
Oh, because it isn't MCC.
Well, why don't you go ahead and explore that possibility then?
Why don't we check into that? Because I believe the council officially made Vice Mayor Lax your rep, I believe, for this general committee. But we'll go back and check and be clarified on that.
Yeah, I do remember that coming up in here.
Thanks for taking.
Everything else, good?
Yeah, there's two other, the MCC MC committees that I serve on at this point, and. and Garrett and Michelle, I was supposed to send you the names of those, but I'm serving on the, the homeless subcommittee, MCCMC, and also the MCCMC liaison to the Marin County Board of Education. So I don't know if those should be noted on my committee assignments?
Sure, why not?
So I have a question. The Marin Telecommunications Agency appointed me to be the board member of the Community Media Center of Marin, and I've been doing that for the last couple of years. And so it comes out of a council assignment. Do we add that one?
I think the original intent of the list was just things you actually got assigned to by the council, but it's kind of morphed into the different things you want to be on, and it's your list, so I think that's fine if you want to add it.
So the, I'm a board member of Community Media Center of Marin, and then I just was assigned to the county's steering committee for affirmatively furthering fair housing. I'm not sure if that's the right title. I have to get it for you. It's a steering committee on fair housing.
And that was, the supervisors did, is it county thing?
Actually, the county community development agency named me.
Okay.
And one, one other thing, yes.
Is that in your capacity as a council member, or is that a personal?
No, it's, they wanted to have a couple of electeds, and the rest are community members. And then I have one more question. So I sit on the countywide community development block grant committee and the local planning area, CDBG. Do we need to have both of those? I've never brought it up before.
To you. You don't have to. I think CDBG, it seems accurate.
I don't care. But anyway, if we add the CMCM, and I'll get you the name of that other one, I think it's called Steering Committee for Fair Housing.
Well, the main problem with naming all these is it's going to use up more than one piece of paper.
We don't like that.
Yeah, put two lines or something. All right, are there, these media assignments fine with everyone?
So you want CDBG on here, or you do?
CDBG is on here. There's just two committees I sit on as part of that, but you don't have to put the other one. I don't care.
Same deal with Tam. There's several of them, but I don't care. Don't put them on there.
Yeah, I sit on a bunch for MC, but don't put them on there.
Anyway, do we need public comment on this, or?
So who's going to take on the committee of keeping track of the guy in the White House?
That's...
You are.
That's a duty of citizens all through this country. All right. Thanks for your comment. Okay, so we've accomplished assignments then, right? Hooray. Next up is number eight, second reading by title only and adoption of ordinance prohibiting the installation of smart meters and related equipment within the town of Fairfax or in, along, across, upon, under, and over the public streets and the places within the town of Fairfax for three years. And we also have a special meeting.
You may want to open the special meeting item now.
I want to open a special meeting also of the Fairfax Town Council, which incorporates an additional agenda item, which I don't have an agenda for here. Do you...
Briefly, maybe I can, I can help. It's just, it's two items. On the special agenda, it's consent item, that's authorizing council member Kohler to send a letter to PG&E indicating that we have a prohibition on smart meters, and if they read out that program, it'd be in violation of the ordinance. Two, the item on the regular agenda is the second reading of the ordinance that prohibits smart meters and related equipment and extends it for another three years. So this is your second reading. It would take effect 30 days from tonight if you approve it.
Okay, is there any further questions or clarifying thing? Open up the smart meter question to the public.
Thank you for keeping this going. It's like there's very few places that have any interest, it seems like. I think what most people, you guys probably realize this, but what most people don't realize is that radiation is cumulative and also synergistic and unpredictable. So all of our phones are Wi-Fi, like there's one over here, especially if you go into schools and places where Wi-Fi is really strong. People don't really think about, what about people that are sitting in that stew, like right next to the transmitters for eight hours, 10 hours, all day, and what about the banks of smart meters in an apartment building with a bed on the other side? And apparently, 3% of the population is actually sensitive to it and affected. Is that, do we just, 3 out of 100 people, is that just sacrificial? So there is data which shows thermal heating of tissues, among other things. Basically, just thank you for just keeping this on, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion, but I just want to have a quick question. So I'll be sending a letter to PG&E, which I'll be working on, but they will be in violation of our moratorium, and so potentially that carries with it potential code enforcement. So I plan to put something in the letter to that effect, not specifics, but I will mention that, and I want to make sure that, just that there will be potential issues with code enforcement. Okay, so I'd like to make, am I making a motion on the reading first?
Why don't you first do the second reading?
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to waive second reading and read by title only and adopt an ordinance of the town council of the town of Fairfax prohibiting the installation of smart meters and related equipment within the town of Fairfax or in, along, across, upon, under, and over the public streets and places within the town of Fairfax for three years.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion, Kohler, second, Winesoff, all in favor?
Aye.
I believe it's 5-0 unanimous, so...
Can I just ask a question? Not to open a can of worms, but do we have any smart meters in Fairfax that have been installed and remain installed? Does anyone know?
I think that, yeah.
I don't think there are, at least since I've been working on this, there have not been any installed.
Installed.
And there have been people who wanted them, and PG&E, after calling me, explained to them, no. So if there are some, they predate my involvement on this.
Yeah, I think they were, there's a couple on commercial places or something like that. Lydia's.
So can I make the motion on the second thing?
Please do.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize council member Kohler to write a letter to PG&E regarding the town's ordinance prohibiting the installation of smart meters and related equipment, and PG&E's violation of the ordinance by the smart meter program startup in Fairfax.
Second.
You're a second hog tonight, Mr. Winesoff.
Okay, so we have a motion, Kohler, second, Winesoff. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous, and with that, I will close the special meeting of the council and continue with our regular meeting, which goes with approval of amended and restated employment agreement with the town manager. And I was actually promised a piece of paper before the meeting that I didn't receive, I don't think. Janet's got it? Oh, Janet's going to read it? Great.
There's a new Brown Act requirement effective January 1st of this year that requires that we do a summary of the recommendation on the contract for the manager, and, excuse me? Okay, can you hear me now? Thank you. So what I said was, there's a new Brown Act provision that was effective January 1st of this year that requires you do an oral summary of a contract amendment for the manager, and that's...
Well, why don't you move closer? She's trying.
Yeah, I'm trying there. This section is in 54953C3, and it says, "Prior to taking final action, the legislative body shall orally report a summary of a recommendation for a final action on the salaries, salary schedules, or compensation paid in the form of fringe benefits of a local agency executive during the open meeting in which the final action is to be taken." So we have a summary, and I think, John, that this would be better if the legislative body made this oral presentation. Can he, can he read that?
Happy to. And this was the promised piece of paper. Okay. "Council is recommending an annual base salary increase of 4% from $176,000 to $183,000, which is $7,000. Overall compensation, including salary, medical, dental, retirement, and other benefits increases from approximately $237 to $245, which is $8,000. The salary increase results in associated slight increases in retirement, medical care, and workers' comp insurance. The $245,000 annual total compensation consists of $183,000 base salary, approximately $20,000 in retirement costs, including Medicare, approximately $38,000 in health and other benefits, including medical, dental, workers' comp, vacation cash out, life insurance, and wellness program." And there's a $3,600 auto allowance, and I think that's got a cell phones in the same as the auto, right? You don't have a cellphone. So that, I'm remembering the old contract, I think, from the prior. So that's it. Out of my...
I'll move that we, after public comment, approve the amended and restated employment agreement with Garrett Todd, town manager.
I will second.
Okay, well, before we get to the motion, the second, let's go to the public.
The what?
Any comments? Okay, seeing no comments from the public, I'll close public comment. And there was a motion, Winesoff, second, Goddard. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. That is all we have left on our dock. It seems so early. It's only 11 o'clock. I was going to adjourn, yes, but before I was adjourning, I was commenting that it's so early. This is a record, 5 after 11. Anyway, there are four people to adjourn in memory of. Heidi Lieben-Hochstrasser, Councilmember Kohler's Aunt Lori Selton, Michael Allen, and Carl Shapiro have all passed. And, yeah, he made it to 100, but Carl Shapiro...
Michael Allen?
Michael Allen also.
The Michael Allen that was running against?
No, no, this is different. This is Michael Allen, who was born and raised in Fairfax, lived up on Mountain View.
Oh.
Michael, very nice man, very diligent house painter.
Yeah, I knew him.
He's a house painter. Yeah, he's been around Fairfax.
And I just want to especially just kind of commemorate Carl Shapiro. He really was a, just a leading legal light in the county, a mentor for so many attorneys, and just a great example of someone willing to fight, fight the good fight even when it was a losing fight, and he kept his act of law practice until he was over 100 years old. I had the pleasure of working with him on a couple cases, and he was just a real, just a real, a big heart and a brilliant legal mind and just an inspiration. So he will be very, very missed.
He, he spoke at the history night on the eve of EcoFest several years ago, and someone asked, packed room, and someone asked, "Mr. Shapiro, after all these years, what would you say the most important piece of advice that you could give us is?" And he said, "Be kind to each other."
Yeah.
So in his memory.
That said a lot of, I was there then, and that says a lot about Carl Shapiro, and also somebody also asked him, is like, "Well, why, why are you keeping on doing this?" And he said, "Well, people need help," you know. He was in it to help people, which is admirable, and he will be missed. And with that, I move for adjournment.
Second.
Okay.
Or second, David.
Motion and a second, all in favor? Aye.
Thank you.